We were staying, we opened, we take under consideration.
How you doing, sir?
Good.
We, we need to come up here for reading. To the, uh, man is. I'm, or, uh, very.
Oh, yeah, you don't have twenty, thirty minutes.
Good luck.
Can we keep that?
See you on his up.
Hmm. Just wait and say we like it.
Oh.
Back in the house.
Good luck.
Gotta have a fun.
You want us up here?
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for your help.
He likes one of the departments. We know. Seventy-nine, thirty. Well, states have. So, yeah. Like, we're not sitting here reading. Cold patch, pet, black girl, cancer. He, girl, picked up trial, his next dollar's a time. Hot patch, picked up on our truck, his next dollar.
I almost asked, I figured I'd be on the.
Nope. Careful what you.
No, that's it.
You might get it. I'll, I'll retrieve it at a later.
Yeah.
How's that an old submission, you guys?
Ready?
Yeah.
You ready?
Hand for the pledge, please.
My pledge, please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every state and justice.
Morning, everybody, to, uh, the regular scheduled, uh, Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting, April first to two thousand twenty-five. We'll start with the consent agenda, Melanie.
Approval of payroll, March fourteenth and March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Approval of claims, March thirteenth, March twentieth, and March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Approval of minutes, March eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We have a citizen's appointment to the, uh, newly created Antler Services Committee.
I'd like to appoint Debbie Gunn.
Second.
We have a motion as well as a second for appointment of, of, uh, Debbie Gunn, uh, Director of, uh, our E nine-one, uh, dispatching system. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Approved. We have an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund, eleven-twenty, or one-one-two-zero, for insurance, uh, proceeds to restore buildings.
I move that we approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion as well as, uh, we have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Uh, I'm gonna stop right here and I apologize to, to Mr. Polarek, is, is the Highway Superintendent, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move him up front here and open. To deal with, uh, uh, these bids, uh, so we can, we can get a, uh, recommendation for the end of them, hopefully.
Thank you.
Here. Proceed.
The Auditor's Office received six bids.
One bid package for central paving.
There's gonna be a bunch of different numbers on them, though.
Bitmat Products of Indiana submitted a bid for products. Asphalt Materials Inc. Pavement Solutions. Continue on, Pavement Solutions Inc. Pavement Solutions Inc. Milestone Contractors LP. Reith Riley Construction Company Inc. For all the bids.
You'll take these under advisement and come back to us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, we have an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund ninety-one-twenty-eight for the Free Patrol Assistance Program on first reading. In this process, the Board of Commissioners must close, uh, the Commissioners' Meeting and open up to a public meeting. And then we'll close the public meeting, open back up to the Commissioners. Just love doing this. And, um, we'll ask if there's any support or any demonstration against. So, if you wanna very quickly ex- explain to the Board what this fund is for.
Good morning, this is a grant from DNR to the Sheriff's Department to cover overtime for patrol out on Lake Michigan.
Out on Lake Michigan?
Yep.
That, that does not include, we don't patrol any lakes and carrier lakes?
No, we don't.
Alright. Alright, I will close the, uh, County Board of Commissioners, uh, meeting and open it up to a public meeting. Uh, I will ask, uh, I have to ask by law three times, uh, if the, those who would like to speak in favor of the ordinance and those, and three times of those who'd like to speak, uh, against the ordinance. So, I'll start with those who would like to speak against the ordinance, please come forward. Second request, those who'd like to speak against this ordinance, to please come forward. Third and final request, uh, those who would like to speak against this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing none, those who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance, please come forward. Those who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance, please come forward. This is like thirty seconds of our life will never come back. Third and final call, anyone like to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public meeting, open back up to the Board of Commissioners meeting and entertaining, um.
I move that we approve the ordinance, establishing a non-reverting fund ninety-one-twenty-eight for the Ma- Marine Patrol Assistance Program Fund on first reading.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. For the, uh, before, uh, the motion becomes ordinance, there's a second reading and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Skillman Projects, jail. Hey, anybody from Skillman? Oh, that's interesting. Uh, we have a, uh, Corilla's Roofing Pay App number seven in the amount of one hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-five cents.
I move that we approve that pay app number seven with Cora- Corilla's Roofing.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Highway Department, Gary Up Construction. Oh. There he is. With the highway project.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I was back to the room here.
That's alright.
Um, so we had some pay applications that needed to be approved for the highway. Gary Up Construction Pay App four. Bloomfield Mechanical Pay App three. Circle R Mechanical Pay App seven, and Circle R Electric Pay App three.
Scott, we have to take those individually, don't we?
None of the pay apps, we can take the pay apps on the highway of one, two, four.
I move that we approve, uh, the pay apps with Gary Up Construction in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred dollars and fifty cents. And with Bloomfield Mechanical, Pay App number three, in the amount of nine thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and seven cents. Pay App number seven was Circle R Mechanical in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. And Pay App number three was Circle R Electric in the amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred three dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Health Department. Morning.
Good morning. So, before you have, um, a couple of change orders with Burgling Construction. Um, one was for the, uh, light in the closet, the other one is for the, uh, data drops that we did. Um, our recommendation is for those to be approved.
Can we do the two change orders together or do those need to be separate?
Do the changes separate.
Okay. I move that we approve change order number eight, uh, to install closet light in the amount of nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents with Burgling Construction.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
I move that we approve construction, uh, change order number eleven, uh, with Burgling Construction in the amount of five thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-seven cents for data drops.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
I move that we approve Pay App number eight in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred eleven dollars and ninety-three cents with Burgling Construction.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing a bid. Tourism. Christine Livingston. Everybody's here to see your. Two minutes.
It's gonna be short, not very visual. So, I'm Christine Livingston, President, CEO of Indiana Dunes Tourism, I just have a few brief updates. Uh, wanted to let everyone know that we, um, are now in agreements with both the state and national park for our staff to sell state park passes as well as national park passes. So, the idea here is that we can alleviate some of the congestion at the gate and provide better service for people coming to the visitor center. Also to let you know that our board has approved increasing the county park support. We support Memorial Opera House Expo Center, Museum, and the county parks and we are vote, we have voted to increase the parks monthly amount from twenty-nine, twenty-nine hundred seventy dollars to three thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-seven cents per month. That will then equal what the rest of the venues get, so that was approved by our board. That takes our annual support for the venues to a hundred and fifty-two for eighty and sixteen cents for everyone per year collectively. Just a brief update on the Indigenous Cultural Trail, we've gotten some good press recently about the installation of our limestone turtles. We've been working with the National Park Potawatomi and Miami tribes to develop an Indigenous Cultural Trail for the past ten years. This is really putting us on the map and creating a destination, um, for people to visit, not only at the visitor center, but just to create an experience for them. Uh, we have bridges, crosswalks, fire pit, a new welcome sign. Um, we've raised over half a million dollars in donations, grants, and gifts toward this project and this signage will be installed this spring. We're working on a new Porter County video, so Indiana Dunes Tourism has been creating videos for all the communities, towns, and cities throughout Porter County to promote not only tourism, but also economic development. So, we have the tourism video for Porter County, but we don't have the economic development focused video for Porter County, so we're working on that. Probably be done later this summer, stay tuned. And then, uh, we've been in the news, so I have some articles I wanna share and then some information about some of our campaigns in light of the heavy agenda today, I'm gonna spare you the details on that and I'll just pass those out. Um, and we also have an invitation for our April seventeenth annual event, which will be at the visitor center, included in the packets.
I'm sure if we have any questions, we'll reach out to you, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you. Thank you. IT, Lee Childers. Morning.
Good morning. I was excited about new copy machines, I didn't know all the Porter County was as well.
What do you have for us?
The, uh, main copy machine for the print shop died and so we had, we needed purchase replacement.
Two.
Two, and that way, there's smaller ones, but that way if one breaks, we're not dead in the water. I can get one for the same cost, it's a bigger machine, but by buying two, if one fails, we're still in business.
So, you have a request to purchase two, uh, Toshiba E Studio ninety-two-nine eight copy machines in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and ten cents. And, uh, for a total amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred thirty dollars and twenty cents. Correct. Uh, the copiers will be used in the IT department and will, uh, be paid for, uh, for the IT budget. I'd ask my, ask my fellow commissioners if it's okay for you to buy two. Instead of just one at this, at this time. And if that one would break. You.
Right.
Back to it. I, I'd just like to hear their feelings, though.
Can you just explain the ramifications of one being down and how long it takes before you can get one up and what impact that has on, on, uh, on the printing for the county?
Um, these are slower, so by using two, if they're both working, they work in tandem, it's faster than just one. If one were to break, we're still in business, service usually takes two days, three days at most, but, uh, they're run constantly.
How much life did we get out of the one that just broke?
Uh, this one was two thousand seventeen or sixteen.
That's it?
Yeah, we've run almost, yeah, five hundred thousand copies there.
I move that we approve the purchase of two Toshiba E Studio ninety-two-nine eight copy machines for a total amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred thirty dollars and twenty cents with Adams Remco.
Second. We have a motion as well as a second for approval, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Those opposed, same sign, motion approved. Thank you. Facilities, Burgling Construction. You wanna start there?
Yeah, so, this is a change order for the lighting in the conference room downstairs. Um, the existing lighting, um, was already paid for as part of the contract, we're gonna use that lighting over at the, um, victim assistance.
I thought we, we addressed this, Carol.
We didn't address it, but it was brought to your attention.
Okay.
So.
I move that we approve cha- change order number nine with Burgling Construction for conference room lighting change in the amount of six thousand seventy-one dollars and sixty-two cents.
Second. We have a motion as well as a second for approval, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Next.
So, Stoyer Septic Systems, this is a request to, uh, repair the mound system over at the Porter County, uh, Highway Department in Hebron. Um, this is for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, this has already been, uh, approved through our Health Department.
I move we approve the request with Stoyer Septic Systems in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for the Porter County Hebron Highway Department Septic Mound Repair.
Second. We have a motion as well as a second for approval, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
The third item is to paint the lower level hallway areas, um, to make them consistent with the renovations that are down there. Right now, we've got thirteen different colors, we're gonna kinda restrict that to what we're going with now.
And which budget is that coming out of?
That's coming out of the, uh, Facilities Department. And the recommendation is for Real Deal, LLC.
I move that we approve for the, uh, quote with Real Deal Painting for six thousand six hundred dollars.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
The next item is for Videotech. Um, this is for the, um, installation and replacement of the access control panel at one fifty-five Franklin, this is for voters, um, Election Department Voters Equipment. Um, this will be paid out of Fund eleven-twenty that you just created by, on second reading today, out of the insurance, subject to the insurance company's final approval on that.
I move that we approve the contract with Videotech to provide and install the replacement access control panel for one fifty-five, one fifty-seven Franklin in the amount of eight thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars pending insurance approval.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
The next item is for the, um, window restoration here at the Admin Building. Um, these have been pretty bad for many, many years now. Um, these will be on a regular schedule, will be done twice a year, once in the spring, once in the, once in the fall. And these will be paid out of Facilities.
Can you read the second one, Scott, said we can do those together?
Oh, okay, so the next item, well, actually there are paid out of two funds, is that matter, Scott?
Oh, sorry. I move that we approve the proposal to restore the exterior windows at the Admin Building, uh, in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
The next item is for the, um, exterior brick and ethos, uh, cleaning over at the Juvenile Detention Center.
I move that we approve the proposal to clean the exterior brick and exterior insulation at the Juvenile Detention Center in the amount of nine thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Anything else?
That it? Spent a lot of money.
We did. Thank you, sir.
Highway Department, uh. An overlook number one, uh, we've already done that, we'll start with number two.
Unless you wanna, we got the recommendation for you on number one, if you just wanna do that.
Oh, that was pretty quick.
Perfect, huh? Um.
Wanna address that right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright.
The, uh, the bids, they're, we're all over in regards to geographical locations and everything, so we just, uh, accepting all bids at the time. And then when it comes down to per project, we will use the lowest bidder for that location.
And that's going to be in the motion that we have to, we will use the lowest bidder?
Correct. We will use lowest bidder for that item at that location.
Okay.
Can we do that without mentioning who bid on those contracts?
No, we're not, we have to mention who, who's gonna win the bids.
I'm sorry.
You have a list of those that, that bid, we wanna mention all their names.
Okay. Yep, um, no, that's alright, I know it. Uh, Asphalt Materials Inc., Bitmat Products Inc., uh, Reith Riley Construction, Milestone Construction, Central Paving. And Pavement Solutions.
That's it.
That would be all of them.
What was the last one, Jim?
Pavement Solutions.
Pavement Solutions.
I move that we approve the request to approve all bids, at which time we will use the lowest bidder, depending on what is needed. Um, the first one was with asphalt.
Asphalt, yeah.
Asphalt.
Plant mi- plant mix asphalt.
Black mix asphalt, Bitmap, Reith Riley, Milestone, Central Paving, and Pavement Solutions.
Correct.
That's your motion. Second. We have a motion for approval as, as, uh, read by Commissioner Rignetz. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Okay, we'll let Martin handle, uh, number two here.
Uh, so, yeah, we did have a successful bid for a CCMG, uh, grant application and we're requesting permission to advertise for bidding. Uh, with the opening of bids being received at the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five Commissioners' Meeting. The scope would include asphalt milling, resurfacing, full depth reclamation, stormwater structure replacement, and pavement markings on various roadways throughout Porter County.
I move that we approve the request to advertise for bidding our annual CCMG paving contract.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Number three.
And, uh, for number three, this was previously approved via unofficial DTO reimbursement contract, there's just a slight revision to, uh, some language that was affected by the DEI orders. So, they had to revise those, uh, discrimination clauses in there and we're still in compliance, so it's, it's a formality, it needs to be, uh, re-executed.
Have you had a chance to review that?
Yes.
I move that we approve the reimbursement contract for in that number one seven zero three zero zero nine unofficial DTO reimbursement.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Okay, um, four, five, six, and seven all have to do with the matching funds for the CCMG grant, so that's just the locations of where the funds are gonna come from and they'll be going into the CCMG Matching Grant Fund.
Could you do these together?
You can do four through seven together.
Would you like the motion to include reading all of those four?
Yeah, I think, but either, you, either him or you, if you would, please.
I move that we approve the request for additional appropriations for items four through seven on our agenda. Fund forty-nine twenty-one, Foundation Holding Account sixty-one hundred, inter-fund transfer in the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then the Additional Appropriation Fund one-one-one-two lit, account number sixty-one hundred, inter-fund transfer in the amount of six hundred and fifty, six hundred and fifty thousand. Additional Appropriation Fund one-one-two lit, account sixty-one hundred, inter-fund transfer in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. And the Additional Appropriation Fund one-one-seven-three MVH account, number twenty-three sixty-two by Tuminus, in the amount of two hundred thousand.
Second. We have a motion as well as a second, uh, for those cases read, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign.
Uh, number eight, uh, as everybody knows, the roads blew apart this year, but we, uh, need more money to buy cold patch.
And they're not done.
And we're not done.
I move.
Yeah, they're not done blowing apart.
I move that we approve the request for additional appropriation fund, number one-one-seven-six MVH account, twenty-three sixty-two by Tuminus, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Second. We have a motion as well as a second for approval, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the bids will be at the Highway Department, if anybody wants to review them, and then we'll turn them into the Auditor's Office in the next week.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Development Stormwater Management, Mike Javo.
Hi, Martin Botchek, I'm here on Mike Javo's behalf. Uh, so, this is, uh, design plans for Bremmer Road, uh, over arm nineteen to Little Cali Met River, small structure replacement project. This was approved at the last meeting and, uh, we need to replace the, uh, title sheet with signatures from the Commissioners approving the documents.
Says this is a county-funded project.
Yeah, so this is one hundred percent local funding.
Much.
Uh, so, we're going out for a bid and, uh, we will find out when those bids are received at the April twenty-second meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, this is just swapping out the title sheet with approve, approvals from the Commissioners.
Thank you.
Do we have to approve anything here, Scott?
Well, we're approving the design plan.
Yes.
Okay. Then I move that we approve the design plan for the permit road over arm nineteen of the Little Cali River Small Structure Replacement Project with HWC Engineering.
Second. We have a motion for approval as well as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Poco Muse, Mr. Paiser. How are you, sir?
Alright, how are you? Good morning.
You got thirty seconds.
Perfect, hey, that's fine, I'll cut it down, I had it to about half an hour this morning.
I'm getting hangry.
I've just come, simply to request from the Board of Commissioners, you have a work by Richard Ead, it's a great drawing, it was done. I've just come in simply to request from the Board of Commissioners, you have a work by Richard Ead, it's a great drawing, it was done in nineteen ninety-three as dedication for this building. It's in the lobby of the commissioner's office, and I uh, shared a great story that was in the local newspaper with Kathy. But I think because it's an original, it belongs with the museum's collection, and we could very easily create a print to have it represented here in the building, since it was essentially commissioned for this building. But just a matter of safekeeping, so that it doesn't disappear in time.
I know you take good care of the material that you have, or the historical uh, material that you have. Uh, you just made me feel really, really old, 'cause I remember.
I didn't wanna point it out, but you were in part, one of the stories leading up to it.
I was six inches taller.
And we'll be coming to the next meeting to have you placed into the museum collection. Just forewarning.
You, you do. Oh, yeah.
I, I take that back, actually.
I move that we approve that the Porter County Museum be given the nineteen ninety-three drawing of the Porter County Courthouse than my art, artist, Richard Ead.
Richard Ead, Edie?
Edie. With the stipulation that we get the best print possible.
Absolutely.
Are you gonna frame it?
Yes. Archival glass.
Got it. Uh, second, we have a motion as well as the second for approval, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you very much. And just as a note, it's a joy to be here where a hundred and eighty-nine years removed from the very first commissioner meeting that happened on April twelfth of eighteen thirty-six. So I was just eleven days shy of being here on the anniversary now. Yeah, April twelfth. So if you wanna take over, uh, walk over by Wilt Park, that's where the first meeting was held, in Mr. Ballard's home.
Will?
Wilt Park, uh, the park here in downtown Valparaiso.
Oh.
It was where the first structure was built, and they held that meeting convene for the very first time on April twelfth of eighteen thirty-six.
And you're gonna start that meeting too?
No, I wasn't. Uh, thank you very much.
Did you start it? Northwest uh, activist, Northwest Now Dead McCloy. McCloud, I'm sorry. You have a request, you have a request to use the northeast and northwest corners of the courthouse April fifth from eleven forty-five AM to hold a rally to support marginalized groups collecting food for food pantries.
Yes.
Let me get, let me see if I can, you wanna use the northeast?
Well, we, um, I have a really loud voice, I'm sorry. Uh, we've already gotten permission from the city, uh, and John changed our application a little bit. Uh, Mayor House has changed, he's, he'll always be John. Um, he changed our application a little bit, which kind of changes it here. Apparently, he had talked to Sheriff Ballen, and they would prefer we use the south side of the courthouse. So we've agreed to that, so that's where we would be. We started out thinking it was gonna be two to three hundred, we, we may be at five to seven hundred at this point. People keep saying they're showing up, uh, so we're here to ask to use the courthouse.
Let me ask you a question, how come you decided to use courthouse and I don't? It's one of the schools parking lot.
Because every rally in fifty fifty-one is using the courthouse square.
But they're not.
Indianapolis.
They're not, they're not, and they're promoting dropping off foodstuffs?
No, they're all, that's a different thing, yeah, they're all promoting different things. We decided to use ours as a food drive for marching, for people in the community who, it's a bad time out there for a lot of people right now, especially given what just happened this week. My whole freezer, every freezer is gonna go down, so.
Yeah, my only concern is, is the, the people stopping to unload their vehicles to put the food on.
We're not asking for that, we're, we're, um, we are supplying totes and things, all we're asking them to do is bring a bag full of it. Uh, there's no stopping to do that, we have to be parked in order to get out, um, and we'll make sure that everyone knows that.
I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, and most people are gonna show up with like a car of food, they're just bringing like a grocery bag to come and attend.
And we've got totes that we're ready to, for them to be put in, we've got, we've arranged for trucks to park.
We've got people sorting stuff as they come in, so we can take it straight from the courthouse pretty soon.
We learned from our last rally, which was period products, and we had staffs this high.
It took five, dude, that, yeah, it took five cars to haul it all over, so, yeah, we are planning in advance for this.
Well, I had an opportunity to speak to Sheriff Ballen, because he is the one that expressed concerns about this, and he likes the idea of doing this one time, just to see how it goes.
Okay.
Because it does require a lot of, um, you know, his staff and both police staff, and to be on site.
Absolutely. Valpo has been wonderful, they've given us all the officers we know. Um, I don't know how much most of you know, but I have a, a protection order, someone who tries to uh, show up wherever I'm at and bring his friends, and so they have been wonderful in keeping me safe, which in turn keeps the crowd safe. Um, the sheriff spent two of his days last time to ensure that we stayed, we all stayed safe. We worked in conjunction with Captain Hall and um, Chief-
McIntyre?
McIntyre, thank you, I was gonna say McDonald's, but he's captain too. We are doing our best, Jeff is actually a friend of mine, so I will, I meant to talk to him today, but he's down in Indianapolis. So I will talk to him again, make sure that we're all square and all on the same wavelength. We don't want to cause any trouble, we don't want to cause any problems, we just wanna hold the rally.
Yeah.
And get lots of food for the food pantries.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, the concerns of commissioner, of the commissioners, it's not that you would cause a problem.
Okay.
It's just the magnitude of what you're projecting, the number of people to be out there.
Yeah, we didn't expect it to take off as, as it did.
And I, and I'm just gonna let you know, I have a serious problem with that. That is not set up out there to take on hundreds of people that are going to be parking their cars or stopping their traffic, grabbing their totes and, and, and filling their totes up and dropping them off to you. You know, but we'll see, we'll see.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, I hope, I hope you think so.
We've, I have held other rallies on the square with Northwest Indiana now, that we've had four to five hundred people, and we've never had a prob, we have not had a problem yet.
On a Saturday?
Knock on wood, yes, actually, on a Saturday.
Yeah, the, the last, the last one that we had was on a Saturday as well, and we had about five hundred there, and it is pretty peaceful and calm.
Alright. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the request from Northwest Activist slash NWI Now to use the courthouse grounds on Saturday, April fifth, from eleven forty-five to two fifteen PM, which would be on the southeast and southwest corners.
Yes.
Second, we have a motion as well as the second for approval, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
They're not mine. It's common sense. Uh, we've come to the end of our uh, agenda here, uh, this portion of our meeting, we asked if there's, it's pretty obvious, uh, anybody that'd like to come before the Board of Commissioners to speak. Can I just get a raise of hands, who, who wants to speak to the Board of Commissioners? One, two, three. Keep, keep them up for me, please, I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, so, not many, so here's what I'm gonna do. I'm not gonna put a time constraint on you, but please respect that, there's, you know, we've all been sitting here since eleven o'clock. So, or some of us even longer. So, uh, since there's only eight of you, I will not put a, a time limit on you, but, but please keep in mind that we've been here for a long time, so let's, and I'm waiting for this little guy to get, to get really angry, right? Yeah, that's okay. So, um, if we can have a speaker up here, and a speaker up here, and the next, and then the next two speakers, uh, stand beside them, so we can move this along. Who, who, who over here raised their hand? Alright, come out, come up here, man, please, insert, or sir. Go ahead, John.
Good morning, John, under Union Township School Corporation, uh, Valparaiso, Indiana. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, before I speak on data centers, which is my main purpose of being here, uh, I caught the end of the stormwater meeting, and I really wanna express appreciation to the commissioners for what you're doing. The Hudson Ditch Project, that certainly affects, that dreams certainly will affect our school property as well as many of our homeowners' properties through, uh, the Center of Union Township. So thank you, uh, on behalf of all of us who are gonna benefit from that project as well. So today, I'm here to talk a little bit about, uh, our data centers, I know that this, this is early on in the process, as I understand it, I know it's not before you today, but I'm certainly here to, uh, express some concerns. As I have been researching and reading about these, I know in a lot of areas, there are TIF districts that will have negative impacts to our tax base, uh, for our school corporation if approved, so that, that's one reason why, uh, I have concerns. I also have concerns about the environmental concerns that will be pres, presented with the creation of data centers, whether it's the gases, whether it's water usage, what, whether it's energy uses. Uh, there's a lot of different, uh, pollution, noise pollution, et cetera, that I'm concerned about. I'm also concerned about property values, and what is that going to mean for homeowners in Union Township that support our schools? I noticed that as, as this is currently laid out, both, I've seen two different areas, but basically what we're going to do is we're going to take about a third or about, uh, ten square miles of a thirty-square-mile Union Township and make that uninhabitable. So, residentially, we're going to lose about ten percent of that, uh, square miles in Union Township. That'll have significant impact on Union Township schools. Lastly, I just wanna say that if I were coming, proposing to this county board, many other county boards, a proposal to build a new school next to environment, or an industrial area, all of you would look at me like I'm crazy and have lots of questions, why in, in the world would I ask to do that? Out of respect, I'm asking you to do the thing. Why would we put an industrial area immediately adjacent to a school? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, hello, I'm Angela, my name is Angela, I'm a lifelong resident, a mother, three, and a licensed homeowner and public administrator, administrator with extensive knowledge of planning ethical development in local governments. Today I'm here, not representing a business or agency, but as a voice of the families in Union Township and greater Porter County, who are deeply concerned about the proposed little free road extension and associated data center development. Our key concerns are these projects appear to be based on outdated land use and incomplete environmental damage. The proximity to three schools without public health impact assessments is unacceptable. There has been no transparent public outreach or meaningful evening for any health, financial and political ties between commissioners and developers raise serious ethical questions. Indiana law requires open, fair, and current planning. We are not asking for any progress, we are asking for the protection of our children, our property rights, and our health. I formally request a pause on all related zoning changes and infrastructure work until the following year completed. We want an independent environmental and fiscal impact study, a community oversight board with Union Township representation, a full disclosure of all of you painted developer contributions. Please do not proceed without the people of this county, because we are watching, we are informing, and we deserve better. I have lived at that exact location where this proposed data center is to be built, um, my entire life, my mother still owns that property. Um, I own with my husband and home in Wheeler, and I lived in Union Township my entire life. I am Union Township, I am a resident, I am a business owner, and I want answers, and I wanna be heard. I have children, and I am busy raising them, and they are creating their own mess that I also have to go through them. So I'm expecting you guys to do your jobs and do it fairly for all of us in this building. Thank you.
Hold on, just, just to-
You're fine.
Is it, anybody else wanna speak on this side? Wasn't there a- We should have somebody at the mic. If you would, if there's anybody else, sir, in the back there, you stand behind this, uh, this, this lady here in the red. Is there anybody else that liked, on this side, that had raised their hand that'd like to speak? Alright. Yes, ma'am, stand behind that gentleman there, go ahead.
Good morning, I'm David Bola, I'm a resident of Union Township. Um, we are not against progress. I, I believe the pristine economic benefit as proposed by Blackrock will not override the negative impact on the quality of life for Union Township residents. Um, there's the water consumption, wastewater, energy consumption, the pollution, the noise in the water. I, I believe that if this is such a vital project, that this should be put into a designated industrial area, not next to our homes and our schools. I'm asking that the commission be accountable to constituents, and let's take care of Union Township, thank you.
My name is Kevin Reiver, I've been a lifelong resident of Porter County, Little Indian Township now. First, I'd like to thank you guys for taking the time to hear our concerns and speak for each of us. And, and we're not a group of people that's opposed to any progress, or opposed to, to data centers in general, but I think we wanna see these built in areas where it's broken. And it's hard to imagine a more inappropriate area than, than directing us to one of our Union Township schools, and not far from Porter Township. Porter County's been a great place to live, it's a great place to raise a family. And I think we've seen a commitment from your board and other county boards to keeping this residentially focused where people want to move to. And I think that building a data center like this certainly lots of a lot of residential development, and perhaps scares our residents who are already from continuing as a country. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for a lot of time speaking. Uh, I'm here to convey to the, to the body here and the commissioners, something of great importance to me, and I'm very passionate about this. I retired from the postal service
Because you might-
in two thousand and three. I was president of a branch that covered four major cities, we have now affairs and represent most of Northwest Indiana. This year, we celebrate two hundred and fifty years of the postal service. In seventeen seventy-five, Congress then, at that time, before we even approached the frames of the Constitution, created the postal service, the post office department. In Article One, Section Eight, it says, only the legislature has the authority to establish post roads and post offices. If you started in nineteen seventy in the post office, it took you twenty-one years to reach top pay, which was four dollars an hour. In nineteen seventy, we went unstruck. It was ill, it was a wild time. And the reason we did it was because conditions at that time were so terrible, when we talked about wages and benefits, that letter carriers, many of them had twenty-five and thirty years in the post office already, that were veterans, having come back from the Second World War, Korea, and Vietnam, could apply and receive welfare. Try to put that in your mind, that you're working for the strongest, richest country in the world, and you can get welfare from the federal government. That strike lasted seven days. Twenty-five thousand soldiers came into the New York City post office and tried to deliver the mail. Impossible. On the eighth day, President Nixon called the union in, our national president, what's it gonna take to get the carriers back to work? Two things, number one, we want a contract for the first time in a hundred and seventy-five years. Number two, no recrimination against any rank-and-file member who took part in the strike, or any union office. Done. They formed a panel, and by September that year, we had our first contract. So we went from that time from the post office department to the United States Postal Service. And we are self-funded, we get no tax dollars, period. There are two hundred and eighty-five thousand active letter carriers now, and there are three different categories. The first is a CCA, a city carrier system. They come in nineteen dollars an hour, with no benefits. Second category is a part-time flexer, who is part of the regular work- Second category is a part-time flexer, who is part of the regular workforce. And the third are the regular employees who have six years or more service. If gasoline goes up one penny, it costs the postal service a million dollars. And you see gasoline spiking now because of what they say like the summer blend. And a few years ago, it was hovering at, uh, five dollars a gallon. We are managing, meaning the post office, to deliver to every home, every business in the United States of America, including one hundred and sixty-seven million delivery points, also sixteen territories that we represent and control. We are considered essential employees, and during the COVID crisis that affected this country, thousands of carriers contracted coronavirus. We could not and did not leave our jobs. We were considered essential because, remind, I want to remind the, the people, the general public about what happened several years ago when we had the anthrax letter bombs in the mail. Room carriers areas like will be affected the most because of medicine and services. Now carriers are being robbed, assaulted, beat, and murdered on the street for the arrow keys that open up these blue mailboxes. We deliver in Wyoming, Nebraska, Dakotas, and UPS uses us as the last mile of delivery because it's not profitable for them. It's a universal, universal service for everyone. We deliver to the Grand Canyon by mule team to this day. The Carolinas and Georgia and the barrier islands by, in Alaska by snowmobile. Last year, we collected seventy-three million pounds of food, the largest one-day food drive in the country. Twenty-five percent of postal employees are veterans. What can we do? Contact our senators, Jim Banks and Todd Gill, buy a book of stamps, because now Trump administration is proposing to sell off the parcel business and sell it to UPS and veterans. So, share this information, thank you for the additional time.
I kept, I kept waiting to hear about data centers, I thought I was having a stroke.
Excuse me, what is your name? What is your name, honey? If they want your name.
My name is John Bultitis.
Thank you, John. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Jean Hardisty, and I'll get back to the data centers for you. Okay, Jean Hardisty, I am a resident of Union Township. I recently was at the plan commission meeting where they were discussing about putting a, um, sorry?
Hold it down.
Thank you. All right, about, um, putting a development as far as a subdivision in between two permanent subdivisions. Listening to that, what I heard was a lot of parents speaking about child safety. Having schools right there, they walk to school, repeatedly, that's what you heard about child safety. Well, I want to reiterate what our superintendent said, Mr. Hunter, about our students' health and safety. We have approximately eleven hundred students in our corporation. What I'm hearing is we heard in the other meeting, we heard one parent say, "Well, if this goes through, I'm moving." Another person said to me, "I don't want my child going there." What happens to our school corporation if we continue to lose attendance? You know, I'm hearing, you know, TIFs, I'm hearing benefit schools, but I don't know there's any monetary amount that will fix that. So I'm talking about children's safety, I'm an retired teacher of forty years with the corporation. I still have concerns about child safety. It seemed at that meeting that the board was attentive, showed that they cared, and I hope that that carries forward to the people that are in this board. Another thing I want to real quick say is it's not only child safety, but it's also our safety as far as the residents of Union Township, even in the surrounding areas. You know, it's, this is not going to be a nine-to-five, this is going to be twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. For how many years? You know, my husband's a farmer, puts the things in, you know, the equipment, planting, harvesting, puts it in the barn. I give him a beer, I bust wine, we sit on our deck. Well, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to do that, if we're going to want to do that, if there's the noise that you're hearing and just kind of other problems. Look at everybody here, I'm sure most of you, some of you have children, adult children. I'm sure some of you, most of you here have grandchildren. Do you not have any concerns if your adult child is living in Wheeler? Do you not have any concerns, would you have any concerns about your grandchildren going to Union Township schools? And you yourselves, would you, if you lived in Wheeler, would you not have concerns and fears about this data center coming in? And basically what I'm seeing is a scale. We got dumb buildings, and we've got child safety, and we've got the health and wealthy of our residents who are your constituents, who we elected you to represent us and hopefully to protect us. So I am asking you to use diligence and compassion, say no to this project. Thank you.
My name is Sandy Hill, I actually live on six fifty where this project is projected. Um, it surrounds my home and my neighbor's home. This whole project disgusts me. I've lived there for thirty-eight years and never in a million years would I think we've come to this. We have children, my grandchildren are going to the Wheeler school system, and I have to worry about this. I have gotten backlash on Facebook because I'm trying to get awareness out. Well, I know what this, I know what this is about. I have a friend in North Dakota that is fighting this, he has this in his backyard. He said it's twenty-four-seven noise. He said, "If you could turn the TV up as loud as you want, you're still going to hear it." They put up the barriers, it made it worse, it didn't help it. This project is not going to bring money, it's going to hurt us. Our children is everything to us. If, if our board doesn't see family as number one, I, I, I see it, I, I can't even describe how I feel. It upsets me. I've said in the other meeting, if you've seen the movie with Aaron Brockovich, they brought in those big electric generators, the small town didn't know what they were getting into. Children were getting sick, people were getting cancer. Do we want to take that chance of this possibly happening? Because people are saying, "We don't have enough data." Why would we bring that here, not having enough data? I think we need more information on this. There are places for this, look down High Sixty-Five, there is tons of farm land out there. Why does it have to be here? It doesn't. So please take the time and consideration and think of our families, our children. Thank you.
Hey, my name's Pete Gudina, I'm probably the only person that's from the section working at a data center right now that would come here. I invite you guys to drive down Route Two, take a look at what they're doing, it is a disaster. It, it's, it closes at night, I don't want that in my backyard, I'm sure no one wants to see it. That, and plus you've got people coming from all over the country, we got truck drivers from Jersey, we got cranes, we got everybody rolling in the door right there. That thing's gonna be right next to our school. I've asked the truck drivers, a hundred and twenty foot long, they're pulling these thirty-five thousand pound generators, how do you get around these corners where you have a problem? We're not even set up for nothing but mostly like this out there in the cornfield. Plus, you got across two section tracks, has anybody thought of that? The power lines that gotta come in, where are they gonna get the water? A sump cooler which runs part of the data centers out, I'll probably get fired in terms of that. It's got two-inch suction, and it just cools out of the ground. We don't have that kind of wa- water supply for that. There's a hundred of them each building, we just put up four buildings. There's another two buildings on, on order there, the whole south side of Tooe's get buildings. There's not enough here. You, you're just not gonna be able to accomplish, you're building the same site, drive, you're building the same site we got up there right now. It's the same identical site, it's massive. I don't think anybody in here understands what you're looking at, a giant brown building with lights all around it. Just look at, you gotta wonder what they're putting in this thing with two layers of fence and constantly layer. What's going on in there that they need all that security? There's not all these jobs, I hear these people, "Oh, the jobs, there's not a bunch of jobs." They come in from everywhere, they put their data, they buy this section of data, they put it in their barn. You're gonna bring in some security guard jobs. Whoopie. That's not bringing the damn thing, it's not manufacturing, it's not gonna be a couple hundred people that are gonna get... You're not bringing much to us. They built this next to a stone, I don't have this phone in my backyard, I got a phone here. It's next to their powerhouse, that's an industrial area, you're talking built right next to our schools, I, I just think that's, I think it's wrong. I agree with you on the road, I didn't want the road, remember we talked about the Willafree section? It's something, yeah, we know we're gonna get it. That's fine, but all of a sudden, now this thing pops, where did this come from? I, I don't understand, Central Ten's told them no, Maribor's told them no, right? And now Valco's told them no, why was something Wheeler happened there? What are they doing with Bailey Town? It's a sit-in idol about Dean Vincent, about all the coal plants over at the US Steel, all that mill property. You could put this over, none of, no one in the area would care, but you gotta, some reason it gotta pick certain areas. Why? And why does it always seem to be like, "We're, it's a well, they gotta put a well," what's with that? And nobody can answer that question. And then what are you gonna do with the water we dump? Shoot it to your computer and then pump it back in drought so I can have it? I don't think that's fair.
Hi, my name is Bill Farman, and my wife, Jen, I have lived here now for four years. Uh, we're in Wheeler School District, and she can't be here today, but she wanted me to come over, uh, to, you know, give some thoughts from her and for myself. And my wife works with AWS, um, so she's been in many data centers, um, through, uh, you know, all over the country. And she said, I would have said this, she said, me to make sure that I said this today, was that they are extremely loud. She's been in there, walked around, and they are very, very loud, uh, much louder than you even understand. And, um, and also on top of that, the data centers have other, uh, sound levels that the human ear can't hear, but really causes problems for people. So when you're nearby and you're hearing these waves, it can cause all sorts of different problems. You can read about it, and, and there's a lot, you can go down that forum a little bit. So she just really wanted to make sure that she, she would let you know, like, she's not for this, I'm not for this. We do not want this near, um, the school, um, in our district. And also on top of that, in total agreement, we should be looking at doing something north, uh, near the mills. Um, that land up there, probably nothing can be put on it, so why not put a data center on it? Makes total sense, no environmental study ever gets passed. But it's, they say new infrastructure, they say new water, there's a lot of water up there. So it doesn't make sense to put it down in our area, we understand we want taxes, we're not against moving forward. We talked about, there's a lot of land way further south, but again, they want it near certain things. Uh, it, it's costly to put, you know, electric, I guess, down there, so there's different reasons to why they do that. But I just bring it back to, um, we're totally for, um, moving forward, but it has to be in an appropriate way that cares for all of us. Thank you so much.
My name is Kayla Solick, and I live within three miles of where the proposed data center is. Um, everybody here's already said basically what I wanted to say, but I also needed to say that I'm against this well, for the obvious reasons. I mean, there's so many football fields and baseball fields and outdoor sports activities happening at schools within three miles of this very, very loud center. Uh, but you can go online and look at videos and see how loud the center is. Like, could you imagine if this were proposed next to Valco High School football field? And if everybody had to sit there and watch sporting events with this noise going on? Would that, "Oh, we're really welcome?" No. I mean, we're in Indiana, there is a plethora of other wide open spaces to put this. The proximity to a school, uh, just does not make sense. Schools also have things that help kids with disabilities or special needs students that go there for hours during the day. I mean, the noise that this could put off, the light pollution, I mean, the proximity to a school just does not make any sense. Um, Jim, I worked right alongside you and your son in Bacon Park City for many years, you've seen firsthand how much you care about the community. Uh, you've always earned my vote for that reason, I know what kind of guy you are, just hope that you take that in consideration when you are considering, um, voting for the location of the data center.
My name is Charles Reagan, I'm along six hundred north, just east of Wheeler landfill. I moved there in nineteen seventy-five, I went through the fiasco of getting waste managed out of the township or the whole township, would have been a dump. I belong to PALS organization, most people don't need that, you know, people against hazardous landfills. I consider this industrial park zone, what you're trying to do, and the extension of Willafree, trying to bring that kind of business into our community. Our schools are fine, my children are fine, I don't care, but it does depreciate your evacuation of your own. And in the seventies and eighties, we had a handbait done through Porter County that eliminated ten percent of our property tax in that period just because of a land that they closed. But it's always there, and for you people to appreciate what we try to do at Union, you have to understand that business doesn't care. Especially NIPSCO, NYSORs, public service, whoever you want to call it. They were responsible for the dumping of mines, they were responsible for the dumping at Wheeler. And they closed, like the man said, they just closed, all the generators is always here, why did we want to bring in? Next will be the salt, the farms, and this and that, I don't worry about much of it. And I'm gonna tell you exactly how I was addressed by waste management, and that's the company, Ford, operating most of the time. When I addressed the man, the regional director of waste management out of Chicago, at a meeting, and the old chambers opened up. The man told me, "I don't have to worry about this, because I can afford to live wherever I want. I don't want to have to be told me or my neighbors ever again, that's wrong, you know it's wrong, and this board needs to appreciate that." And I have one more statement that I'm gonna add. Whenever you put a sign, and there are, you know, about two or three in that area, little bitty signs like this, like I put up for yard sale, that's wrong. You need to put a visible sign from the road that your plans for changing the zoning of the area can be real, you can go buy a car. It's all a fine art. This is the biggest county, and I've been watching you bring stuff through this council, remember, behind the, the back door? I've seen it. I also work for Bethlehem Steel, and this commission said, "We can't give them tax breaks, they already employ ten thousand people." This is wrong. Get some jobs in your community that are safe, light manufacturing, whatever you gotta do. I don't want anything else like this in my community. I've watched it, I've watched it, I've watched it, it done me no good tax-wise, the school and them built out of our pockets, not out of this company. And I do not understand tax evasion. What would be a tax evasion for this place? Why?
You're asking the wrong board, we don't approve tax evasion.
Wonderful, but you're part of it.
No, we're not, we're not, sure, we're not part of it, any, any ta- any tax evasion. Let, let me make one thing clear, the Porter County Board of Commissioners or the, uh, the Porter County Plan did not advertise for, for, for a data center to come knocking at our door.
I know that.
We are not building that data center.
I know.
We have not, we have not rezoned a, a square inch of that property out there, okay? It's, uh, uh, there's different zoning, uh, uh, portions of it, this, it's not gonna be re- it's, we are not requesting that to be rezoned, is my point. We're not the bad guy here, we're, we're, what we're doing is managing your government. They have come into county, into the county and asked to be heard.
By state law, we must hear the case. To step out of that and deny them that is breaking the law. I'm not going to do that. Uh, we are here to represent you. Okay? You, you, well, I, let, let, of, of course, of course, I'll. I've been, uh, you know, I, you know, yeah, and it's as frustrating for us as it is to you. Because, you know, we, you know, we have to, we have, you know, we're hearing all this, this board will eventually be the board that decides the fate of this request. We get that. What we do, what we, we ask the, the residents to do is, uh, please allow us to do our jobs.
I will do that.
I, I, you do not want a county commissioner who's gonna stand up here and tell all of you folks, I'm against this, and not let the process take place. The process is very important to you if you haven't realized it, because it could be you up in front of us. You do not wanna give a county commissioner that much authority and power to step out of the process and say, you know what? We're gonna pick the winners and losers here, to hell with the process. You don't want that, folks. You do not want that. And I'm just gonna speak for myself, you all have elected me seven times to public office. I, you've trusted me so far, I, and evidently I haven't broken that trust, trust me here. We'll, we will get to the right thing here, eventually. Okay? I'm, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Marissa Barnes, um, I am a Union Township resident, uh, and a business owner as well. Uh, and I wanted to thank Barb for, uh, saying that she would vote no for that. At this point, I just don't understand why you two cannot give us that reassurance. So you can run your meetings like normal, and you can do business like normal and move on. Jim, thanks, you told us at the other meeting that there are tons of people in recliners at home that want this project. So I went out, and I got a little petition together, and fifteen hundred people have signed it in one day, saying that they not want. Also, I have heard that you may not take those signatures, but they are verified with their addresses. Seventy-one percent of those people are from zip codes four, six, three, five, four, six, three, three, which I can also present the data on. I would also like to ask, if the city and the county are not bringing these data center projects to us, then what is MCR Consulting doing? What is MJ Thomas and Associates doing with their tip writing and their grant writing? Uh, and they're hired by us, and they're paid for by taxpayers, but then if you look up MCR, they also, uh, do site selection for data centers? I don't know. Uh, I use the AI robots against, against, um, them on that, um, and ran some deep research reports to figure that out. Um, I also would ask, is SEH Engineering involved in this? When will we hear disclosures on that?
No, it's not.
Okay.
But what's your point?
My point is, it seems like.
Well, listen, ladies and gentlemen, my employer is SEH Engineering. So I, 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 if you wanna take a swipe at me personally, at least give me a heads up. Okay?
How about we let her speak?
I'm not taking a swipe at you personally, you just closed it in February twenty twenty-four, so it's public information. Sorry I looked into the public information. That's all I got, thanks.
Well, just, just for the record, ma'am, I will not step out and deny or approve this without the, the process taking place. That's what you pay us to do, that's what the law says that we must do. If you don't appreciate that, you know, I'm not gonna apologize for that.
You're paying to listen to.
Yeah, well, I, I get paid to follow the law. And that, eh, and we, eh, whoa, 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 no, 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 we're, we're not gonna do that, you, you wanna, you wanna come up here and say a few words, you come on up. Well, we're not, we're not going, well, we're not, no, you're doing more listening, you're yelling. Let's stop that, go ahead, ma'am.
Oh, she went next.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, um, my name is Melissa Reed, I live in Center Township. I was involved in speaking out against the Valco Center for its bad choice of locations. Um, I would like to also thank, uh, Mr. Agnes, uh, for him holding, who do things cautiously as opposed to excitedly. And, um, I also am very supportive, George Downward, um, it was at nine hundred when I went to that, woke up to more than twelve hundred. So, uh, city council lady in Valco, uh, her name is Barb, uh, she got fifty phone calls, and of those fifty, one was for it, and forty-nine were yes. Thank you. Uh, those forty-nine people were in love with her to consummate that, saying no. So to me, thirteen hundred should have some weight as to the sentiment of the people that vote. I personally, and, and we're, we're looking at finding an answer to this, I don't understand that it was perhaps legal to receive the application by the county commission or by the department of planning. Uh, it clearly says that IEM institutional zoning is only allowed, uh, light, or, uh, uh, light industrial. Uh, these are heavy industrial, not light industrial. Um, anywhere that's zoned them light industrial is completely break red. They're new in twenty twenty-two, they've only been built since twenty twenty-three and four, there are no studies. Um, QTS has a, a paid environmental company, uh, Kim and Corn, and I would suggest that you not take that uh, without a very close filter and find a study of your own. These don't belong anywhere near schools, hospitals, homes, farmlands, on top of wetlands. They belong in heavy industrial areas only. Um, we are very blessed to have seen the quality of geologic formation that Lake Michigan water has produced. And I know farmers have concerns about water, people that live there have concerns about water being polluted, that they withdraw from their own personal wells. But when you look at Lake Michigan, you see how much industrial is there, and the water problems they have in places like Portage. They're continually fighting trying to keep that nearshore water healthy enough to not do harm. And when you start taking out ten million dollars a day from a wetlands that goes in directly into that, it may affect some pavents, water condition, or amount of water, and given five years, the filter down process to the lake, it's gonna directly affect the Lake Michigan nearshore waters where Indian American water gets all of their water sources from. So then what happens, they have to pay, and everybody gets to pay for a place that's then like Chicago, ten miles out, to get water sources from that are pure enough to not, uh, to be used. Um, there's no financial upside if one child gets harmed from this, much less many, or teachers, or anything else. You know they're gonna want a business, and I don't know why we would ever give a free ride of any sort to a hundred and forty billion dollar company. Beyond that, it would create bond issues for water and sewer facilities, fires, uh, departments that don't exist. It would increase utility bills, would increase homeowners insurance with the risk of that, would increase the county's insurance with the risk of that. Pud zoning is very dangerous, and I don't think you can legally put pud zoning in the middle of rural residential because any industrial is not allowed adjacent use. And you can explain it away, it's a pud, but is it a residential pud, is it an industrial pud, is it a data park? I can take that by a commercial park, is it mixed use? No, it's an industrial pud, is what they want, it's not allowed adjacent use, I don't know why. It should've looked at, and I person your confidence in saying that I'm not, I'm not gonna go there. NiSource has to create their own new company just to figure out how to power it. There's a company named Hickory Grove Properties, they own three large tracts, surrounding one little, a toast-sized parcel that gets roads, and that's on the very west side where Jeremiah Ains is planted. So if you think they don't have the intention of taking the entire area over, I think you're really missing something. There's a landlord named Bubba, he also has three companies acres in twenty, to the east of Jeremiah Ains. And if these companies even utters a word, like, let's get rid of the one right by the school, to the first, the one further west, cuz we can add on them. We can add on them, you're still gonna end up with two hundred acres of industrial use in the middle of the rural residential, which is not allowed adjacent use. So pud, no pud, I don't know why this conversation is happening, because of that one technical. I'm asking also, and perhaps the, the planner's office has already signed the application, our copy that we got listed for you is not showing signature. Right in County Person. That does not put the user from enacting a clause on any new applications. So that they can't come and say, well, hey, it's okay, people will not put it by the school, but we wanna hear a mile over, and now we're gonna do an application here on Hickory Grove, here on Dirt Day and Frank. I would like you to see the possibility that's already happening as a result of us remonstrating like this. So I'd like you to enact at least a six-month clause, if not more, for any new data center applications in Porta County, to give yourself a break, to have time to really look at this Hickory Corn study, to, to look at other areas, to tour other areas. And it may take a year or two years, there are many studies, this is what you have. So give yourself the time to make sure you're careful with everybody else's kids, and the teachers, and the groundwater, and Indian American's groundwater. Um, I appreciate you emailed me back when I had asked, somebody was asking why meeting wasn't being livestreamed. Uh, I, I would like what you had offered, that you would pass a motion to require that they be on the county site within forty-eight hours, and that a livestream is verified working, um, I didn't hear that brought forth today, but I would love to hear that at next month's meeting. So, thank you very much.
Good morning, everybody, um, my name's Amy Ketchum, I am also a Union Township resident, and I had a note in my phone to say a lot of things that my community members have already said, so I'm gonna kinda skip around, so apologies ahead of time. But first, I just wanna say, I grew, I've grown up in Union Township, I've lived here my whole life. Uh, my parents were very heavily involved in the Union Township community when they were still living, and when my brother and I were going through the school district. Um, my dad assisted in building some of that Wheeler athletic complex, such as the press boxes for baseball, the football, and the soccer fields. He's coached many of the middle school basketball teams, um, girls and boys, and was also the announcer for the high school football and basketball games, uh, before he passed. I grew up playing all sports, uh, going to the games and those fields for my games and my brother's games, and, uh, this is where the proposed data center will be the backdrop for. I truly have the best memories growing up, and it's because of all of our community here today. I'm going to need, uh, someone to backcheck me on this, but I'm pretty sure there's only a few, um, high school teams, uh, athletic teams that have won a state championship, two of them have come from Wheeler High School, the twenty-ten, uh, Wheeler Boys Basketball Team, that my brother was a point guard for, and then the twenty-ten Wheeler Softball, uh, team as well. And this community prides itself on being able to offer the level of academics that we do, with the teachers that we do, as well the, as well as the athletics component as well. The athletic facilities that we have at Wheeler are truly second to nowhere else in the county. Um, I put up the big schools, Valco, Chesterton, against our Wheeler community, uh, for those athletic facilities, and people are moving into our community to be a part of that. This data center, proposed app, I should say, uh, would hinder that as well. Something else I wanted to bring up, um, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say today, um, is to touch about just the health impacts. Uh, so April fifteenth, nineteen eighty-two, right about this time, do any, does anybody know what happened on that day, almost forty-three years ago? Klein and Bridge collapsed. My family was directly impacted by this bridge collapse, as three of my immediate family members were working on the bridge that day. My grandpa was not on the part that collapsed, my uncle was killed instantly, and my dad ended up buried up to his neck in concrete with a piece of steel rebar going through his back. Somehow, or I'm sorry, hold on, I skipped a line, there we go. It's, it just sounds like, where did that go?
Take your time.
Okay, so my dad was buried up to his neck, uh, in concrete with a piece of steel rebar going through his back. He was on life support for two weeks following that crash, where doctors, nurses, everybody told their family he would never make it. Somehow, two weeks later, he got strong enough to get off the vent and made a full recovery with no big health issues, until they came approximately twelve years later. My dad was diagnosed with kidney disease, and because it was so far after the accident, and there were very few survivors, couldn't link it back to what happened that day. In nineteen ninety-seven, my mom donated a kidney to him, and all was well. Fast forward almost twenty years later, to twenty fifteen, and my dad was back on a more aggressive dialysis and needed another kidney because the healthy kidney my mom donated to him was now a shriveled up brain. October twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen, my brother donated the kidney to my dad. Six weeks later, he passed away from an infection, but the reason why I tell that story is because the health impacts that happened from that day didn't come about until many, many years later. Fifteen months after my dad passed, my mom was diagnosed with early onset Alzheimer's disease at age sixty-two. Now here's where it's get, gets interesting, everything you read about Alzheimer's is that it's hereditary. It's passed down, it's in the genes, yada, 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 any, any research I've done at least. So no one in my family had Alzheimer's, my grandparents, her parents lived until almost ninety, they, my grandpa played rounds of golf at eighty-five years old, eighteen holes, it was amazing. So how did my mom, at sixty years old, get Alzheimer's? We don't know, we will never know. Could it have been hereditary? No, because no one in my family had it. Could it have been environmental factors? Possibly, my mom worked at Inlet Steel, Bed Middle, now Inlet, now Arslar Middle for forty-plus years before she had to retire from her diagnosis. Could it have been from all the fumes and pollution that she? Hold on, I messed up again. Uh, could it have been from all the fumes and pollution that she experienced every day going to work for forty-plus years? We don't know, we'll never know. But what we're asking, I think, as part of this community, is that you take that into consideration, because the health impacts, we're not gonna know for many, many years down the road. Today's my mom's birthday, she would've been seventy years old, instead she passed at sixty-five due to Alzheimer's. So we just ask that you consider these health impacts and everything else that our community has said before, uh, voting for or against all this, so, thank you.
Hi, my name is Whitney Trumbull, um, first I wanted to say thank you for allowing public comment without a time restraint, I think that's noble. I just wanted to ask on behalf of many mothers and working families in the future, that these meetings be held at a time if possible, after work hours. And, um, the other note I wanted to add is, as much as wealth is incredibly important, and I know it's one of the businesses, about health and time seems to be more important. And if you don't have your health and you don't have the time, what is the wealth worth? And so as we think about the impact that could be taking place potentially, not only for the residents, but for our children, we need to take a look at that, so appreciate you all listening and going through the process, it is important. But I also think it's important to make sure it was heard, and I think that a different time would allow for a lot more people to be a part of this as well. And then lastly, if I could just have a raise of hands, if anyone here is in. And then lastly, if I could just have a raise of hands if anyone here is in favor of the data center. Potential proposal. And there is no one. And those concerned opposing, please raise your hand. In the entire room. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wendy Regal and I live in Chester. For all I know, you could be the three most honest politicians in Indiana. You could have all made up your minds already that you're not gonna pass the proposal. Or maybe it's just that you see the ridiculous specs of the PRD and realize it's gonna take a whole lot of accountability that either you nor the county code itself knows you do not have in order to swallow what they're asking. Or maybe you don't think that this near industrial takeover and Wheeler follows the comprehensive plan. So let's just say that that's where you're at, a no in the end, no of your view. Whether or not you felt you should say so publicly. Under those circumstances, you three are absolutely not the reason why we can't put our faith in you. You are not the reason we don't trust you. I'll say it again. You are not the reason we don't trust you. You are not the, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna tell you who it is. It's the secret and predatory business tax practices of a hyperscale data center industry. And economic development teams whether they work for the state, the county, the town, city level. It's the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission whose members are appointed by the governor who raise our rates. Anytime it's over requests it despite the fact that they pay their shareholders millions of dollars in profits last year. They want great grandma to pay more. And even if they're for honest and reasonable people serving on the I U R C. If they don't follow the governor's plan for economic development, they're gonna lose that position. And they will also face the criticism and the shunning of the North Pacific Forum and the Indiana Economic Development Committee. Who have literally said to local town council members, we brought this to you and you didn't take it. The I U R C couldn't do the right thing individually, even if they wanted to. But you can. You've got local control and I'm sure you weren't all that thrilled with the possibility of losing it with the bill that was proposed this year in the State House saying, hey, let's take away the home control and they get control by the state. That's horrifying because what, what would we need you for? When we fought this data center in Chester, we did not reach the stage where the landlords within three hundred feet, three hundred feet of the property were legally notified. I know this because I was one of them. But when we got the public records after the developer withdrew their application, it did have the names of about sixty-three immediately affected landlords. It was an awful feeling seeing our names on a piece of paper, knowing we really had no control over our own fate. We became physically ill because most of us had invested our lives in our homes that were gonna have forty foot setbacks from a skyscraper. My neighbors went to the doctors for heart palpitations, insomnia, and anxiety attacks. And the dang data center with its substandard rubble wasn't even approved or close to being built yet. We were and are already set. And that is why I have continued to fight along every town in Porter County. Regarding the lack of widespread noise studies, whether we're talking about the kind you hear or the kind you feel or both, we share what evidence we have. You think this data center industry is not the legal studies? That somewhere, someone along the way, some engineering or consulting firm didn't think, hey, what if we did some of our own studies? But what if we did do our best to get third party studies, impartial third party studies? That would shut these people up if we had overwhelming evidence. And I will say, if they had it, they would be shouting it from the rooftops and they'd go. So either they haven't done credible studies because themselves, or they have and can't share it because it's gonna scare the hell out of even themselves. You three are our last line of defense. Sorry, gotta go. Ed Soliday with his two thousand nineteen Pro Data Center bill and all the other people I mentioned so far have left you three to take heat. Please understand that we cannot afford to trust you before this is over. And you make it clear through county ordinance that hyperscalers are not welcome near homes, schools and farms in Porter County. Please do the right thing, Porter County Commissioners. The role is not even paid for you by the Chester City Town Council, the Burnt Harbor Towns Council. And now the Florys Town Council. They have the moral compass, they had the moral compass to listen to their felt citizens. And knew that this is not what was best for the constituents despite the fact that other interested parties still gave them a hard time in the vote. Get the money that Porter County needs, the old school way. Work for it in all kinds of creative, upright ways that you are certainly capable of. Since you got this far. Inspire the people again and let us inspire you. Those are the kind of leaders we want. Those are the kind of leaders we wanna vote for and work alongside. We're not expecting you to get everything right from the time you started to hear about these data centers or think about the data centers in Porter County. But we will respect that heck of a deal. If you continue to educate yourselves over with us just, uh, about data centers and in the end. And in the end, make that hard decision to protect the entire county. Near homes, farms, schools and my. Make the hard decision to protect the entire county from this awful, awful industry. Please start with Wheeler. Then you can be your own very reason for us to trust you.
Hello, my name is Wes Barnes. I'm a resident of, of Porter County and Union Township. Uh, I just wanna say thank you all for being here today and hearing this out. And, uh, I, we all, I think we all understand you have a difficult job to do. So thank you for your service and, and hearing me out. You know, I, we, we've heard a lot from everyone today. There, there's been concerns about safety, health, uh, our, our kids, schools, things like that. And I, I can imagine that as you play out the process as you, as you should by law, um, there's gonna be a report or something generated, uh, by the other side that said, that addresses all of those concerns. Um, but I just wanted to share one perspective that I haven't heard to hear today, and that is, um, you know, something I learned as an infantry officer in the United States Marine Corps, serving in Afghanistan, is that perception is reality. And, um. So, so while there might be a lot of data and, and reports to address these, these concerns that we have today, I just want you to take that into account that, again, perception is reality. And, um, I, I just wanted you to take that into account as you hear out the process. Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, my name is David Hyman, uh, resident of Union Township. It seems like this might be the fourth meeting where I didn't anticipate to speak and hear. I, uh, I can tell, uh, Mr. Biggs that you have some growing frustration, right, with, with how the community is reacting to this proposal? Or how different, uh, pertinent information is being brought up, whatever it may be. Um, I, I did wanna say that last week I spoke and you made a comment, uh, and I don't mean to point you out directly, but you made a comment that you've, uh, personally taken a stance against solar farms. Personally, that any solar farm manufacturer or developer could, there's no, there's no ordinance that says they can't be here. They could come, they could present, they could apply. And you've made a personal stance that says, no solar farms. Bart has made a personal stance to what I've seen, that she has said no to data centers. I'm not asking Jim Biggs Commissioner to publicly say no data centers. I'm asking Jim Biggs City Senator to take a personal stance on data centers. Now, I am not an expert on data centers or zoning or PUDs or a lot of the things that were mentioned today. I do know a little bit of thing about business. And a lot of times when you decide something in a business, you use a risk or a risk reward analysis. Well, usually the risk is investment. How much money are we willing to put into a project and what is the reward that we're going to reap afterwards? In this particular instance, the risk isn't monetary value. It is our community, it is our schools and it is our children. Now, I can only see one benefit of a proposal like this and it's money, tax, revenue. But the risks involved in a project like this far outweigh the reward. And I know at least from what I've heard today, our community, our schools and my children, they're not for sale. Thanks.
Alison Ruiz, I am fifteen years old and to go along with that, I'm a former school. But just because I am one of those children that we should be defending and are defending by bringing up these claims against the data center. Don't think that I am dumb or don't have anything to go with that. So I have an idea, um, I do, uh. So I've, I have Crohn's disease.
Sure.
And so I have a lot of health things that go along with that. I'm on a medicine that I inject myself with every two weeks. And so it's very dangerous. There could be a lot of health things further on the road. Because of that, I have switched over to a diet. And so from this, I've learned that yes, there are ways to go forward. But just because we want to go forward, that doesn't mean that you have to damage yourself with that. And so I've heard a lot of great things today and, but there's one thing that I haven't heard and that's about our own environment and our survival. So like Yellowstone, there, there were degrade moles that have been going, that had a period of going to the brink of extinction and they're coming back up. And over in Illinois with the bald eagles, they were disappearing. And so if you put one of these in our environment, I am personally afraid for the animals because of the noises and the vibrations and the pollution of what they will be feeling. That they will slowly disappear or die of. And then we won't have our amazing creatures in the air or our whitetail deer or our fish in the river systems. And so I'm just like asking, you know what is right? And if you have that feeling of what is right, then you should follow it. And I know that there is a process, everything has a process. So if you go with what you feel is right and what comes with God, then whatever comes from it, it will be the right decision and it will lead us forward. Thank you. I'm Alison, Alison Ruiz.
Alison, I took a lot of guts at fifteen to get in front of all.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Johnson. Excuse me. I'm a new person in Union Township for five years. Uh, my daughters have both moved out here because they got away from the city and looking for a, a nice place, a safe place for their children to be raised. I only have a grandson and he has special needs that should be attending the, um, Union Township Elementary because that's what's best for him. So that's why they moved here. As for myself, I'll be within the radius of hearing this machine. And anyone here who owns a power washer, have you heard it lately? Do you wanna hear it twenty-four seven? No, nobody does. But my concern is, we're all human, we all have needs and we all need to be, okay, we don't need to have the stress from this. We don't need to have the worried pollution of the town or our water being contaminated. We're lucky that we live by Lake Michigan. We have a great resource. Do we wanna use that? No. In conclusion, my act, what I would like to ask is it be on record that I'm asking at the next mission meeting when this comes up. That there not be a limit on the time that people can talk. I've watched many things on TV where it could be one minute and the clock goes off and the audience and people are sent away.
We haven't, we haven't put a time limit on it.
Pardon me?
So we have not done it.
I appreciate it and I'd like to be on record that next meeting, there be no time limit because a lot of us know what we wanna say. And yeah, it takes guts to get up here and say things in front of people you don't know, but it comes from our heart. And only God knows what will happen and I pray that he has a hand in this and will not allow the data center. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, Commissioner Julie Georgie, Union Township. Thank you all for listening to everyone. Um, I'm just gonna say something really quick. We don't wanna wait six months or a year or longer to have this come back up in front of you. I think the process should be moved forward as quickly as possible. It sounds like the next step is a public meeting with the Plank Commission and you all in attendance. You know, everyone's nervous about it. We don't want to live for the next two or three years waiting to see what happens to this. So I respectfully disagree with taking a pause. I think that we should move forward as rapidly as we can. I have faith in you all. I do.
And we are Julie.
I know. Um, I have faith in you all. I think that the right decision will be made, but we don't wanna wait three or four years worrying about it. Let's make the right decision as soon as possible. Thank you.
I think I promised that I wasn't gonna say anything today, but I'm sorry. And I'm addressing you, but I would also like to address all of you. I am so proud to be a part of your community. I am so proud. And you all are doing the right thing, every step, every sign, every flyer. But most of all, I believe that all of you are going to do the right thing. It may not seem like that right now because it's a process and it's difficult, but I believe in you and I know this is gonna work out in our favor.
My name is Amy Carey.
Sir? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Jerry Che. I'm a forty year resident, sure wouldn't have, three children in the high school as we speak. I did set up a school board about twenty-five years ago and I used to be electrician at Dibsco a long, about fifty years. And one thing that never really got discussed here was the effect of electromagnetic radiation that is given off through the flow of elec- electricity. Now, way back when, uh, when they were, uh, talking about building Union Center News School. Current buzzword was I challenged them and they decided to change pace and the board at the time adopted the idea of remodeling Union Center. I thought they did a fantastic job in this, really did a good job. But the electromagnetic radiation has been identified by the United States Cancer Society that it caused leukemia to children. Now, don't take my word for it. Go online and read it for yourself. Now, I, are, do these facilities put out electromagnetic, electromagnetic radiation? I'm gonna tell you. A forty, a forty megawatt system is, that's forty million watts. Every time electron flows through a wire, it loses electromagnetic field. Now, you don't have to take my word for it, but what I did last night, and I've done this before, is is I took a forty-eight inch fluorescent light bulb, got out of my car and walked underneath the current tower that they just recently remodeled and I did it right by the school and it illuminates. It's not, it's not a gas. Do it yourself. Just grab a forty-eight inch light bulb. Now, don't expect it to light up like these. But I'm saying it illuminates. It illuminates. I mean, I am in electromagnetic field. And I'm saying now you're talking about something fifty times more powerful than that. Just a few, I mean, what are you talking, two hundred yards, three hundred yards away from our school? Why would we do that? Now, an interesting statistic is that the United States of America is roughly about three point eight five billion, uh, acres, three point five billion acres. So it's a pretty good place, pretty good size of place. So why would we subject to place a data center that can cause all of the problems that everybody discussed here earlier? But then turn around and put it right on top of the school? I mean, it's, it's like insane. It's like it's not even thought out, but there's one reason why they're trying to do that. Is they want to get power on that power grid. That's what it is. It's a location. It's a money, it's a money grab. They, they, they need that power source. And I'm saying, like it was said a dozen times, remote, put it out in the cornfield. Some lady said something about I sixty-five with all the towers up the perfect place for it, but not by schools. And you know, Union, Union Center is just down the road, I'm gonna say six hundred feet. And those are really little children. So get a, get a light bulb, walk out underneath that, see if it doesn't illuminate. See if you now believe what I have to tell you, that this electromagnetic rate, electromagnetic radiation is a big deal. Like a four hundred, a forty megawatt, four mil, four hundred million watts of energy just spinning distance of the school. I, I have nothing else to say other than if you do agree that we probably should be, that you need to get signed in your yard, in your neighbor's yard, and let everybody know what you think. Because without support from all of you like you have and the school board and Mr. Hunter Superintendent, this thing is gonna go through because BlackRock is big money. And one more thing that will get out of the way is that this morning at, uh, I think it was about five thirty in the morning, I had to get up here early, I, um, see a per commercial, how AI needs to be broadened and we need that to beat the other countries uh, ahead of the game from whatever. I didn't even argue with them, but not virus. End of story. Please get those signs out. I don't know who handles the signs. Is anybody in there handling the sign? There's a sign lady right there. Ask her, maybe give her your name and number. And I, I think there were twelve to fifteen dollars a sign. Might be the best investment you ever made in your life. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for, uh, it's, um, it is a benefit for us to hear from you. Um, you know, I think, uh, the other two commissioners will, um, will agree that, uh, you know, over the last few days, we've received dozens of emails that, um, I think we've all tried to advance answers as quickly as we can, um, as intelligently as we can. Um, but I ju, I want to leave you with this, is that, um, I think, uh, one of the ladies over here had mentioned that, um, we, the commissioners, were all you have. I'm just, I'm, you know, for what it's worth, I'm just gonna tell you, that's why we're here. None of us ran for the office or was, or elected, you know, by a data center or a data center owners. None of us own stock in a data center. None of us own property that the data center would like, like to buy. And I, I personally know no one who works in a data center. I know it's frustrating. I know, I know a lot of it because of, a lot of it is based on, um, your fear of, of, you know, what surrounds the, the health of this project to your community. It's not just the visual of it, it's the health and it's, that's a legitimate concern. And I think it's a concern of all three commissioners as well. But the process, allowing the process is critically important, allowing it to take place. That could be your property out there. It could be you in front of us next month asking you, asking us to, to determine whether or not you want to rezoning, for whatever reason it may, there may be. You don't want us saying, just cherry picking up here, saying, now, well, yes to you and no to you and no, you get the process, you don't get the process. You do not want that out of your local government. Just leave here knowing this. All of us are, we, none of us are up here because of the pay. None of us. We're up here to represent our county. And our, and we can't do that unless we're representing you. Give us that opportunity. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Carrie and I have been watching obviously what's going on in the communities.
I think we all are today.
And we've kind of, we met today.
Okay.
To kind of go over how we're gonna, she's gonna do some of them, I'm gonna do some of them. Hopefully in a period of fifteen, twenty minutes at most, we can cover.
Okay.
Everything that we think is relevant in, in the legislature.
Got it.
Really? Very well. Oh, that is great. You've lost ya.
Is Michelle coming? Okay, then I'll wait for her. I'll give her a minute or two. Yes, I'm just gonna give Ms. Cherry one, one or two more minutes and then I'll start. Thank you. So many roads are closed and blocked off. I still don't have power. Cherry doesn't even try to get.
You know, my power went out for about twenty seconds.
Oh, my goodness.
We don't have a tree down.
We have, we were out twenty-six hours.
You telling me you've got, you're. Well, you know, if you live right, uh, good Lord takes you.
I tell ya, I said, I said a long, hard prayer and about, uh, hour and a half, two hours later, our electricity's back.
Well, yeah, you were saying how bad it rained too.
Yes.
It rained hard by us, but not crazy.
The trees, uh, they didn't fall from the roots.
That's why I'm like, I feel bad.
My place, they just, it was wet like they were time. Just came to. And they'll go over.
Longer you're, you and I put together.
It's a nice pond.
Well, now we gotta use them. Don't do any good sitting there.
Not too much.
There's storms.
You gotta, you gotta do.
You know, I've told you. You were so issue when you were on the call for your support.
No, all right. All right, if we can please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and one government, indivisible, with every breath of breath and every breath of breath.
Thank you all for joining us. Michelle's to be here soon and Terry is out today. She has no power, um, in her house still. I don't have power in my house yet either. Um, so pray for the NIPSCO and tree people for all the hard work that they do. Thank you for all of our guests who are here today and if we can have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to approve.
Great. Yes.
Dr. Brock?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Dr. Osama?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next board meeting is scheduled for May sixth. Um, by then the finalized state budgets should be given to us, so we'll have a little more knowledge of what's coming forward towards us, um, from the state. Um, I, we do have a quorum, so I'm gonna keep going on. I know Michelle's gonna join us. There she is. You did it, just in time. What happens? You're good, you're good. Um, so I'm gonna move on with new business. We have a few proposals coming at us today. First one is HI, HFI funding proposal from the Valparaiso YMCA. If you can join us at these. Thank you for joining us.
You can go ahead and start.
Mm-hmm.
Good, good afternoon. Um, I'm Wendy Burbidge, Director of Development, and this is Elise Komenakis, Wellness Director, and we represent the Valparaiso Family YMCA. Our proposal expanding accessible wellness opportunities in Couch and Hebron directly aligns with the twenty twenty-five KPI set by the Porter County Health Department, aiming to reduce adult obesity rate among residents aged twenty plus from forty-two pers, forty-two point six percent to forty point three percent by twenty twenty-eight. Specifically, we will address health disparities in rural Couch and Hebron by providing accessible weekly fitness classes such as chair yoga, senior strength training, and cardio dance. Partnering with Porter County Public Library, our certified and CPR-trained instructors will deliver engaging classes using mobile fitness equipment funded through this grant. We will evaluate the program's effectiveness through attendance records, participant feedback, and health outcomes. Our requested seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollar camp grant supports essential equipment instructor compensation, targeted marketing, and contingency planning. Long-term sustainability will be, will be ensured through diversified funding and local instructor training. We welcome any questions.
Thank you. Just to start, I don't remember if you were with us when we started this whole wellness proposal. I know Sylvia, you haven't, but we've launched an initiative. Um, one of our, one of our four main metrics that we want to work on with our HFI funding um, is to bring down the obesity rates, um, in our county. Our state ranks horribly. Um, our county isn't great. Um, and so that is one of the things we wanted to focus our attention. Um, Commissioner Regnet's, uh, had initiated this Poco Wellness Program for all of the county employees to get them involved with incentive programs and different modalities of, um, health and wellbeing. And so we kind of took that kind of model and wanted to extrapolate that out to the, uh, county. And so with that, we put out an RFA for community members to come to us with programs that we can help assist with to get out to the community, um, to get them moving at the end of the day, just to help combat, um, the obesity. So I don't remember if you were here when we voted for all of that or if that was after you, my mind, I never knew after. Just so this, these are the programs that are coming to us because we put that RFA out.
There is a scoring rubric and that's, we see that in front of you. That's one of the things that I put in front of you. Um, and it just gave one sheet for making up book proposals. Yes, but it's the one without the, um, at the top of it. So if you want to look at that, if you guys are discussing and, um, looking to see if it's appropriate.
I don't know if I have that, but pass it to one. Oh, okay. Very good. Shannon, thanks. I like this. All right. So that, that's kind of where we're at. Uh, one of the, um, target areas we have been speaking about for as long as I've been part of the Health Department are these areas like Couch and Hebron that really tend to not get all the services that our bigger cities and our county have. So I personally was very excited for this, to see this come across our way to, um, somewhat address underserved areas, which I would, I would say that they are, and to see you guys from the Valpo Y to expand out that way. Um, and reach out to the, that, uh, that population, I think is very exciting.
From this proposal, it says from May to December. So this will begin in May of twenty twenty-five to December of twenty.
We'd actually contacted the, um, library, the Porter County Library, and they were ready to go in Jan, in June. So that is an adjustment.
June.
June to December. Yes.
Six months.
Yes.
And this would be the cost for six months?
Yes. So the breakdown, you see.
What, what is the anticipated number of participants?
It's hard to say. Um, we haven't made an effort like this, a, a mobile effort like this, so it's hard to say. I can tell you anecdotally that the library is really excited about, um, partnering and about this opportunity. Um, I also reached out to the chambers or the contact people or the chambers. Um, not all are still function, functioning right now, but, um, they were also welcoming that opportunity. So I think there's a need or an interest. I, I really, it's hard without doing a marketing.
Well, and you have a robust about, like, I like to see that you guys are kind of taking the marketing seriously and kind of reaching out to this community so that. I think one of the struggles we have with everything that we do is getting the word out and get, letting our community know all the wonderful services that we have available to us in Porter County. So I've yet to find what the magic is, is to get that, that fixed.
Marketing is, is really difficult to find the magic, that magic.
Yes. Yeah.
You can only try. And so, um, the plan was to notify as many households as, that we could do affordably. So that's why we chose postcards and, um, a specific, you know, within the community. We're not gonna do everybody, but, um, a certain, um, household by age. So the best we can do as far as demographics, um, to let them know, but also the library was very willing to help support and do outreach with us. Um, and the fact that we have, we have social media, we're gonna be getting the word out about it as well. So word of mouth will help. Um, but it's, it's a cha, it's always a, marketing is always a challenge.
I will say that our, our partners, um, at Purdue Extension just did an outreach, one of our programs about talents.
Yeah.
In South County. And now she has a cap that she can have on her class and she filled the class.
Oh, that, that makes me feel so cool. Yeah.
Wanted to point that out. So.
Right. I think this is an area that's craving for more services to reach out to them from what we've opened our assessment. So. Yes.
I would like to say this is a great idea and I thank you ladies for being here today. Um, my only question would be, uh, do you guys, well, have room to make sure that the Board of Health is acknowledged within the advertising and, uh?
Absolutely. That's, that's, that wouldn't be challenge. We'd wanna make sure to, um, the Board of Health as well. I think that's important and it just legitimizes us even more.
I, I think one of the things that we're trying to accomplish is we have a website called Find Help and we were hoping that potentially might, um, use this as a platform to also advertise that as well for us.
Oh, wonderful.
Perfect.
So the classes are free initially. Are you guys looking to maybe check, like, as time goes on?
Mm-hmm.
If this is successful in like the upcoming year to maybe make it where it's actually making some money so that you might not need to get as much funding from us?
Yes. Yeah. And so I know, and I can't remember the page, but I, I do mention that we would discuss, um, based on the feedback, whether it be on a sliding scale, um, just to make it, uh, 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 it, it, us able to continue. But I'd also be reaching out to business owners, you know, I, there's different ways to, um, look for funding to help make it affordable. I mean, that's, I'm, as Director of Development, that's my role is to continue to make our, all of our services affordable for everyone in the community. So I, I would identify those opportunities to continue that even in Hebron and Couch.
I think this is a great idea too. Have you reached out to the town councils?
I, I have, uh, I've.
I think, I would, uh, suggest that you may have a little presentation to each, each of the towns. And to get the word out as, you know, as broadly as you can.
We'll definitely do that.
So excited, they can't wait for you to open the door.
Yeah. It can't have, you can't have too many, um, advocates, cheerleaders in a community, so.
And all the community partnerships just, I think, makes us all stronger, working together.
Yes.
Well, if there's no more questions, I will put a, um, motion, um, for us to vote upon, a motion to approve the HFI funding proposal of the Valparaiso YMCA expanding fitness program. Need a second if any.
Motion.
Thank you. Yes.
Dr. Brock?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Dr. Osama?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to it, working together and hearing updates. We love hearing updates.
We'll make sure to have that happen.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Portage YMCA. Shannon's joining. Thank you for coming back. I've said this about Sam before. Shannon is another one that everyone should know. She does so much in this community with the Portage YMCA, helping the homeless, small business owner, all of these things. So I find it very exciting to have the opportunity for all of us to work together and witness the hard work.
Thank you. All right. So I am Shannon Berhans. I'm the CEO for the Portage YMCA. So I had the pleasure of being here last year.
Yeah.
To ask for some funding. So I did put a, kind of a recap of all of the fun things that we've done over the past year. A lot of outreach events. We did over fifteen. Doing lots of education, blood pressure checks, diabetes screenings, fit checks, body scans. We have kind of blown it up on social media. We did several social media posts. We did direct mailing, things to this grant for, for Ys that's not really normally in our wheelhouse, not in our budget, to kind of do direct mail pieces. But we were able to partner with the Chamber this year. They did a magazine that went out to over eighteen thousand households. So all of our chronic disease prevention programs were in there and management programs that the Health Department mentioned in that as well. Email marketing campaigns. We did direct outreach. So we have a lovely retired man who does outreach for us, and we send him out once a week. He visits doctor's offices. Yeah, he's, he's one to your office. So he goes out, working on referrals, making sure that we're getting the word out that doctors know we're there for support. We know that your time is very valuable and don't get to spend as much time with your patients as we get to when we get to see them daily. So encouraging those referrals. We did a hundred and nine businesses this year, some senior living communities as well. So lots of outreach, trying to get referrals and just more exposure to the programs that are available to help manage chronic disease. We did health screenings, wellness programs, all of those screenings led to eighty-eight people deciding to take a next step in the journey. And that was what we could absolutely track. Obviously, our hope is through the education and through doctors or other referral services that they found other ways to continue their journey as well. But we have eighty-eight people who have made a choice because of those outreach efforts. We also created eight engagement opportunities for our seniors to foster social connections and improve their wellbeing. Our senior population is still definitely our most involved. We find that they are more willing to, to make positive changes. And so we definitely see a bigger return on our investment when we are, you know, making intentional events for them. So overall, between marketing and all of that, we project that we reached over thirty-two thousand people this past year, so. And then for this year, obviously, we want to expand the programs that we're currently doing. We saw in, especially in our blood pressure self-monitoring program, that's definitely our biggest challenge. High blood pressure seems to be so mainstream. It's very, very difficult to get somebody to make a decision, to make a change in their health. The diabetes prevention program, super easy. The minute somebody sees that they're prediabetic, they don't want that next diagnosis. So we were able to get them connected, and they're very, very willing to make a change there. So for our blood pressure self-monitoring, we have been consulting with other Ys across the nation and have found that they're seeing a lot more success by doing seminars. Do we have four seminars on our radar to start ASAP? Dash Diet, there's one cooking, one just kind of helping them relabel some understand, and then lowering their sodium. So that's our plan for blood pressure. We want to introduce a new evidence-based program this year, which is Healthy Weight in Your Child. So this is really kind of tackling that obesity issue at a family level. This is a, a program that we can, we have access through, to, through our Y world. And of course, we're well positioned to deliver that one because we do see a lot of kids and then being able to pull on the families as a unit there. Part of our expanding the family-based approach for obesity is, besides Healthy Weight in Your Child, is our family physical activity nights. So one of the things that we launched this year, we introduced our elementary school-age kids to pickleball. And so we have now our youths starting to play. We have our adults that are playing, but what we'd like to do is kind of merge those two and create some more family opportunities. It's a fun way to play, gets people active and moving, and hopefully they just think it's fun, and meanwhile, we're creating some positive impact there. Lots of other ideas for that piece of it, but then we'll move into the nutrition education, healthy eating workshops, cooking classes. We started to launch a Food is Medicine program this year. That was specifically for a separate initiative, working with prenatal families. So we have a couple under our belt right now, working on really kind of expanding that out to the whole family unit as well. And then family engagement, community garden, parent workshops, family meal nights, and wellness challenges are our targets there. And then school-based interventions, so healthy snack policies. We do this every day after school anyway. We have a five-component meal that we serve to our kids. It really kind of strengthening our partnership with the school to make sure that we are mirroring the healthy, healthy snack policies as well. We are looking into a walking school bus initiative. So just really kind of getting some communities together that can have a few days where they're guided and walking to school versus taking the bus or car transportation. Local farmer, another kind of initiative for us is being able to buy fresh produce and send that home weekly with our kids and our families. After-school fitness programs, obviously, we do a lot of that anyways, but just more incorporated into our after-school program. And then, of course, specialized programs. One of the ones that we pride ourselves on are inclusive programs. We partner with a couple different organizations for that. We have specific autism programming that we do already. Once a month, we have several events that we're doing and just trying to increase that again as a, a family unit. That was a lot, so I'll pause. Questions?
I really appreciate the data. It's really important, right, to say that this is what you proposed, this is what you gathered, this is what you've served, and then what you've learned from that.
Yeah.
That's really the important part as well, is not just gathering the data, but also analyzing it to say that, you know, we thought this was a great idea, it is, but we need to tweak it a bit to maybe make it more impactful. And I think that, when we look at the rubric, right, that's what we're looking at, is how to make the most impact for the most people across the county in ways that are healthy in a bunch of different various categories.
Right.
So thank you for providing that.
Yeah.
In a way that's easily readable, that is really well-written, right, and really does meet the things that we proposed in the rubric. So I thank you for bringing that back to us.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. It, yeah, the blood pressure one was for us.
But I like how you brought up, there were people that came back to you guys and like bought into, to the programs, but there are people that initiated conversation with their own primary care.
Yeah.
Being where I'm located, I saw a lot of patients who got contact from what was going on at the Portage Y and then came back and said, we saw this over there, I should probably be on top of this. So they may not have hit you and your numbers, but they do in mine. And so, you know, the, the net casts wider than we can sometimes see by numbers. So just that introduction and for people to get thinking and then discussing it with their physicians. I, I saw that personally in my own practice with this program. Yeah. And I know that, that, that this nutrition and that involving the kids has been something that's been really dear to your heart when we first started talking to you. So I think it's really exciting that we hit the seniors and we hit the kids all at the same time with this program because those, I think, are our biggest need. And to do it in a fun environment, you know, it's probably a place where these kids go to have fun and to let loose, enjoy themselves. Then if we could sneak in some, you know, good information in there, too, I think is the best of both worlds.
And I kind of like the idea of anything family-oriented.
Yeah.
I feel like you're getting everybody involved.
Yes.
Because really, that's kind of the goal for, like, you know, as the Health Department, is to be reaching everybody and kind of making things more fun and interactive. So I think that's a great idea, just, yeah, in general.
This is a one-time grant for, because I was going to ask, you know, what are our metrics as far as being able to deem it successful when it's a one-time grant, you know? But I guess if it's a one-time grant, then you'd maybe give us a report at the end?
I think the same issue, we, you know, we hit our year from the previous grant, and we were, hopefully, we're here again.
Next year.
Next year and get to hear these updates and hear from people in the community.
Perfect.
I agree. The only thing that I was, you know, I always get a little nervous about is anything that's going towards a salary because.
Yeah. We may lose.
We might not have funding for it next year.
Yeah.
I always reiterate that, you know, if there's any way you guys can find funding for some of these.
Yeah, so.
Would be beneficial.
It's really interesting because we're, we're definitely in the people business, right? Like, you have to have a person to administer everything here. But I think for me, one of the really kind of amazing things that I've seen happening over the past seven years that I've been at the Y is the insurance companies are starting to take more notice. And so like the diabetes prevention program, for instance, there are some Ys right now that are able to build Medicare for this. So it's huge. Like, it's not, nobody really thinks of a YMCA building insurance.
Yeah.
But, but it's coming. So as we continue to do these programs and we start to be able to collect this data and show that there is success, the insurance companies are noticing. So I anticipate that even by next year, I'm going to say, I don't need funding for these things because insurance is finally getting it. That is so important to do the prevention piece. Then they don't have the exceptional cost once somebody is diagnosed.
But for now, though, do you have the contingency or ability to pay those salaries? Are, I mean, are these existing folks who are going to take this on in addition? Or are these new standalone?
Yes. They're not new hires. Yeah.
Hires.
Yeah, so.
Because if you hire a new person under grant funding, there is with that.
Yes.
Certainty.
It is, we essentially, what we do is we take our people who are already doing some pieces of this, and then we just enhance it. And we, yes, we go out of our building instead of just offering the program to people who walk in the door.
Salaries for program administration and facilitation, that twenty-three thousand would be spread across.
Yes. It's not just one person. Yeah.
And then same thing that I asked the previous Y, make sure that there's room for it in Porter County Department of Health and the Find Help advertisement along with you guys as well.
Yeah, absolutely. We have every flyer that we've done this year. The Health Department was recognized on that, on the magazine that went out. The Health Department was recognized on that. We invented a calendar this year that went out to all of our donors and businesses, which actually they have over there, and the Health Department's on that.
And these are on our Find Help website?
I don't care.
Wait, yeah, I don't know. They click their page for Find Help.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. You need to add that.
Perfect. Yeah.
I, I know this is a tall ask, actually, of both YMCA's, but it'd be wonderful if you guys actually had the Find Help button on websites. That would be very nice. Not even the Porter County.
Yeah.
Health Department, just the Find Help button.
Yeah, that's not a B, but I can make my B person do that for sure.
Thank you. So at this time, I will propose a motion for us to take a vote for the HFI funding renewal proposal and expansion to the Portage YMCA.
Second.
Thank you. Yes.
Dr. Brun?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Dr. O'Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Up the good work. Thank you.
All right. In old business, we have to re-discuss the Strength and Stillness Program.
How are you? How are you?
All right. So I presented last month. This month, I have Samantha Aguilar here. She has done a lot, I mean, very well-known, one in the community, but we've also used her to do yoga with law enforcement in our crisis intervention team training that happened last year. So I was hoping first I could just run through the changes that we've made.
Yes.
For our proposal. And then I actually, since our last meeting, it seems like yoga for first responders and the reentry and recovery community just keeps coming across my desk. So I actually found a few really cool studies to share as well. So first, our big update, one of the questions that was asked last meeting was if we could expand it and make sure that we were able to fill the classes. So what we, what the Sheriff's Office has, I mean, they were more than on board with it, is to open it to first responders in general throughout Porter County. So police, fire, EMS, coroner's office, any first responder agency will be invited to attend. And then for those at Recovery Connection that's geared towards the reentry and recovery communities that we're going to promote among our various community partners like Hilltop, the Community Resource Network, things like that. So we'll get a wide reach. The capacity is still twenty at Recovery Connection and thirty at the Sheriff's Office. But the ability to advertise it so widely, I think, is going to make it, you know, one, it's already accessible, but two, it's going to make just a lot more people able to come. The other big adjustment we had, so last month, I know we already talked about the KPI being weight loss, and we had already included that in there. But since that meeting, I did a little bit more research and we found, actually, I referred to the Connecticut State Police Department's yoga, how they mandate it for their officers. I mentioned that last meeting, and I went back and I pulled their presentation, which I hope was sent to, sent to you guys maybe. Okay, good. So one of the things that stood out to me about that statistically, they reported, as they started implementing this with their department, it was twenty percent improvement in injury mitigation, use of force reduction, anxiety, reduction, flexibility, and breath control. So, and I also included, I'm not sure if this was shared out with you, but I have a, a study showing that it actually prevents PTSD among first responders as well, the ability to practice yoga. So those were additions, in addition to the weight loss KPI that we mentioned last month. We also, the schedule remained the same. I know it was asked last meeting whether we would consider doing six months to see how it goes, and we're absolutely open to that. We broke down, so originally, for Samantha's classes that she does for other agencies, that's where, that was the, the rate that we included in the. the rate that we included in the last proposal. She was, she came down significantly to make this more affordable. So, um, you have the updated numbers and and what it would be for six months or for a year. So we would be more than comfortable saying that, you know, we would run this for six months, see what our numbers are looking like. And then if we wanted to do a year, you know, we'd, we're happy to come back. But, um, we cut the cost down significantly. And I also, in terms of sustainability, I know I mentioned, um, so since the last meeting, we got contracted with one more MCE. So we have one more to go and then we're finally at the end of the Medicaid tunnel. So that hopefully in terms of the reentry and recovery side will be a sustainability, uh, option. But I also spoke with the MAC, which is our, our law enforcement training center, um, about potentially after seeing how this goes. Which I really feel that it will go well, but at the end, we, um, the MAC was, they said you'd be more than welcome to facilitate this there. And they have other funding avenues as well, so that could be a sustainability option too. So then that gives us sustainability, both from the law enforcement side as well as the reentry and recovery. Um, and then I know it was also asked, this was actually sent to me. So I was in, uh, I was in Wisconsin a few weeks ago for a first responder peer support wellness conference. And I accidentally ended up in a yoga for first responder session. And, um, so the instructor that actually sent me the data this morning. So you did not get to see this yet, but one of the things that stood out to me in the last meeting, um, I know I was asked to kind of gauge interest. And truthfully, with the first responders, it's extremely difficult because when you say yoga, a lot of times it's like, why would I do that? And the data that, uh, this instructor sent to me, she specializes in yoga for police. And, um, the data that she pulled, it was with the US Marshals. And she has it blocked out so that when they first asked the officers, how many of you would participate in yoga? Fifty percent of them said yes, fifty percent said absolutely not. And then they did the courses with her and then like ninety-five percent of them said, yeah, I would totally do yoga. So all that to say, I think, once it starts happening and it's happening consistently, we're gonna get a lot more buy-in. And because Samantha's the expert in yoga, I don't know if anybody has logistical questions about what it's like. But she and I talked a lot about how her, her style really incorporates the meditation component, so it is accessible to everybody. Um, like I said, I've fallen asleep in at least four of her classes, so it is very, one, you know, helps with weight loss and physical fitness and all that. But two, also absolutely calms the body and the brain and and helps in all these different ways, so.
Yeah.
What did I miss or what questions?
Well, I I would love to hear from you, like in terms of the services that you provide, because I can say, speaking for myself, I know nothing about yoga.
Yeah.
Um, I do have, you know, I know a lot of people who participate in yoga and I mean, in in terms of helping with mental health, blood pressure control.
Yeah.
Um, chronic pain, there's a lot of avenues where yoga, I I've seen, um, be beneficial. But I'd love to hear from your vantage point as an instructor.
Yeah, so I've been teaching yoga for about eight years. Um, it started off with more like physical fitness. And then as I began teaching, I was seeing how, um, slowing it down and adding a little bit more breath work. And adding a little bit more like gentleness to it was actually making it more accessible for people and we were getting better results. So I primarily work with an older age group, I would say. And over the last like eight years, I've seen people go from, you know, kind of like waddling and not really being able to walk to being able to walk, which then now they're able to do a lot more physical activity. And they're able to have like a better genuine appreciation for life. So on top of that, I've also worked with, um, like the CIT training. And then, um, I've also done the reentry in the recovery population for quite a while now. And so to get into like the, like yoga world for a minute, um, so like yoga is like a, an A-line path. And there's multiple things on that path. So one of them is Asana, which is the movement. Um, but the other parts are breath work, um, meditation, concentration, um, turning inward. Um, so these are all different aspects that I feel like, um, don't really get talked about a lot in the fitness world of yoga. But there are those benefits that people end up getting from taking it, um, that they don't really realize is going to happen, which is what happened with me. I went to yoga just trying to be fit and then next thing you know, I have, um, like better like impulse control. I'm able to enjoy things a little bit better. I'm able to slow down even though we both talk very fast. Um, so these were all other benefits that I found. Um, and so that's why I've started creating classes that are accessible to all fitness levels, accessible to all ages. Um, Sam's been in class where I've taught the same class to people on the ground, seated, and in a chair. So I, um, have a pretty good depth of working with different bodies in all the same class. So nobody feels like they're not able to participate or they feel awkward participating. Um, so we've dealt with that before too. And, um, going into also a little bit more of that is also, um, so we do like a lot of diaphragmic breathing, which is stimulating to the parasympathetic nervous system. And so if we're working with obesity, um, we also wanna make sure that we're working with cortisol or stress hormone. And so that's kind of like that piece, I feel like that gets left out a lot with, um, like fitness and obesity. Like it's more than just physical movement. Like I love to talk about nutrition, um, because that's important. But then also we need to understand that we're whole beings. So how are we working in the body with those stress hormones? And we can't really hit that with just, um, physical activity. That's where we need to bring in our element of, okay, what are some ways to stimulate that? Okay, so there's certain poses that stimulate our vagus nerve and our parasympathetic. And then there's also certain breathing techniques that we can do so that people are then able to bring down that cortisol. And then effectively like adjunct their physical fitness or their nutrition programs that they're doing.
Very good.
Yeah.
Very good.
I could go on for hours, but are there any other specific questions?
This is what we were interested to hear.
Awesome.
Yeah, cause I think, you know, if you hit on the aspect of, you know, a lot of what you were saying, you know, the spider flight.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that becomes chronic.
Yes.
Needs to cr- hormonal dysregulation. And then a lot of chronic, you know, emotional dysregulation, behavioral dysregulation. I think if you sort of use it from that perspective too, not just, you know, sort of the stereotypical, oh, I'm gonna be a pretzel.
Yeah, right.
What we think about yoga.
Yeah.
But if you're expanding it, because when we look at the rubric, you know, and we're thinking about the capability of applying this to a wider audience. That's really part of the first responder struggle as well, is dealing with the emotional regulation, the emotional dysregulation. That coming upon a scene can happen and that reliving a traumatic experience can happen, right? And so I think we also sort of expand that to say, how is this also efficacious in their lives? Beyond just weight loss, I mean, those are important.
Yeah.
You know, things, but I think what I had read from especially the things that Sam sent, you know, in the research articles for minimizing the possible development of PTSD. And those kinds of things, you know, that goes a long way too, to expand a person's ability to continue in this. You know, in maybe their police, you know, abilities.
Mm-hmm.
That maybe would help expand it as well. So I'm hoping that we can also bring that to bear in this.
Mm.
Hope them understand that it really covers their whole wellbeing. Cause I think, you know, as a health department, we're really trying to expand mental health and physical health. So I appreciate you adding those things to that presentation.
Yeah, the first responders are a big cornerstone in our community. So, um, making sure that they have like those, um, programs that also help them, like not just physically, but also mentally is really important.
We agree. And I, and I appreciate, you know, um, responding to our feedback, you know, ex- including a wider range of people. They can have this available to them, because that is one of the things that we struggle with, with this fun, with this funding. We wanna try to reach as many people as we can. And so I appreciate that you've looked into those avenues and have incorporated them. I appreciate you cutting down the budget. I mean, we're all, yeah, this is all what we're all dealing with and we don't even fully know what our budget will be. So I appreciate that. I I very much, uh, notice that and appreciate it.
Excellent presentation. Um, as far as getting this out to both the, uh, first responders as well as the recovery community. I don't see anything budgeted here for that. Do you guys have an idea of how you're gonna get that out?
Yeah, it shouldn't, it shouldn't incur additional costs. So we actually, um, eat, this morning, for example, I I sent out, um, an email to all of the police agencies and it won't be difficult to incorporate the other first responder agencies too. Um, that was specific to our crisis intervention team training, but we, we have those emails going to the law enforcement agencies all the time. Um, and then we also have, uh, our wellness meetings through the MAC as well as at the Sheriff's Office, so that will be no issue. And then for the print materials, um, we, Recovery Connection is fully on board with promoting it there among the hundreds of people that come in for meetings there. Um, and then the CRN meeting, Community Resource Network, that I hosted at the Sheriff's Office, Demetrius does our newsletter actually for that. So it's free to put it in there. We have, uh, like a two hundred or so agencies that are on that mailing list. So it won't, it won't cost extra, but we'll, it won't be hard to get it out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And when did you propose this would begin?
Both locations are ready to go. Um, can barely remember what year we're in. I mean, I.
All right.
I mean, here.
Crazy.
Well, I think we had talked about like May-June was something that we were both, yeah, we were both available whenever a start date was.
Well, we're gonna launch this program by our health first, so I think that would be a great time for us to have that available with our launch for two.
Yeah, if we had a month or two to advertise, then I'd say, I think June is ideal.
Yeah.
So at this time, I'd like to put the proposal for us to vote, uh, for HFI funding proposal for Strength and Stillness, uh, program.
Do we need to distinguish between the one year and the six-month proposal?
Um.
I don't think so, cause it's the, the new proposal, I specify that, that they sent.
But are we voting for the one year or the six months?
Oh, for the six month.
We're voting for.
Yeah, cause I think your proposal now is for the six month, correct?
And then reevaluate.
The funds were fine, we are fine.
Reevaluate. Yeah, absolutely.
Thinking for six months, but I'm gonna make sure, cause the proposal has both in it.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could I recommend that maybe we do, could we go through the end of the year just because of our.
Yeah.
End of the.
Perfect.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah.
So we don't have the full number then for that. Is it okay if we continue to vote pending that final number?
Yeah. As long as the fraction makes sense.
Okay, you're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So a motion for the Strength and Stillness Program. Yes.
Doctor Brun.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Robin.
Yes.
Sylvia.
Yes.
No, April Fools, yes.
Hard sell.
I can't help it.
You're the first.
Really?
I got, I got a dirty look from. I win, I win tonight.
Thank you. Wow.
Any is a comment.
Thank you, thank you.
You actually, you actually got me even worse than my wife with that there. I mean, good look. You got that down, Dave.
All right, report of our board attorney. You have a lot of things underlying in circles.
I prepared here, um, there will be a quiz at the end.
Oh, no.
Um, but seriously, it is April Fools. And he took my line away.
Oh, Steve.
Also.
By the dirty look.
It's also the first day of the last month of the General Assembly.
Oh.
Now I'm sure there's no correlation whatsoever. But what's important, but all of it's important. But what really starts focusing our time and our energy of reviewing is once we cross the halfway point in the legislative lawmaking process. Then bills have to be out of their respective houses before that. If there's any possibility that they're going to become law. And if, uh, Carrie and I are the ones who do the watching of these laws. Um, we'd be running around chasing our tail if we tried to follow all the laws that got submitted. I mean, there's about fourteen hundred in the House and about nine hundred in the Senate. And so we kind of just glance through them until we get to this point. Where it starts becoming important that we know what's going on in Indianapolis. And just some of the highlights that I'm gonna talk about and then I'm going to ask Carrie, because she has contacts as well. Through the state, uh, to kind of fill us in and make sure we all understand where we are. Uh, as has already been alluded to by a couple of you up here, we are in the Miami budget-making process. And we simply at this point don't know what's going to come out of the legislature by way of the new budget. We've heard some things that are a little troubling in terms of what may be on the minds of some of the legislators. Carrie and I are both convinced that our local legislators are supportive of what we're doing and would like to keep, uh, it around. But I'm gonna defer to Carrie to give us a minute or two discussion of what her sources are telling her through the state, uh, Department of Health, uh, as to what we may be facing and what may come out of budget process.
Yeah, and I don't wanna speak too soon for Dr. Boxen, because we've talked about this a little bit. On, uh, we have meetings every other Tuesday, we have a local health department updates meeting. And then on the other Tuesdays, we have grants meetings. So we have things to report out of both meetings this month. Um, on our local health department updates last Tuesday, so we do today, Dr. Weaver was actually on to talk with all of us. Um, so the, um, Health First Indiana is in the Miami state budget, so that's House Bill one zero zero one. Each session, it's a budget session. Um, in this session, as you talked about this, um, Governor Braun did put the initiative in at one hundred million dollars each year. So last year was seventy-five, this year it's funded at one fifty. So he had put it in, he does believe in it as part of his plan for Indiana, um, chronic disease prevention. And so he put it in at one hundred million each. It went out of the House and into the Senate at, um, the halfway point. And the Senate has referred it to the Appropriations Committee, which is where it sits right now. So when it was in appropriations discussion, um, there are legislators that would like to see it completely removed from the budget. Um, and others that would like to see it phased from one hundred to fifty and then disappear in the next five years. Um, and so in that, you know, other budgeting things that are going on in the state. And so she, you know, was making us aware of that. And then on Wednesday of last, Tuesday and then on Wednesday, we received a call from a reporter who wanted to speak with us because she's been assigned to follow appropriations, so she had heard that same conversation. So I don't know if we saw that, but it came back.
Good, yeah.
Um, they interviewed Lake County, um, and us as well about, um, what we've been able to do over the last two years, what our plans are going forward and what it would mean, um, to lose the funding or for it to be drastically cut. So one of the things Dr. Weaver did ask for is that we reach out to our partners, which we did. Um, every state city here has contacted every single legislator that we have, um, that represents our county. And the surrounding counties and receive responses back that they've also shared with us. Um, we have heard a lot of support from our local legislators, but they also asked that we, um, would reach out to our boards of health. And so after the meeting, if it's okay, we'll send you guys an email. And I, of course, can write whatever, if you're inclined, but it did kind of provide, like, a, you know.
A skeleton email, yeah.
As well. And so I think some of the biggest things that, um, each of our partners represent, they're put in their own personal experiences and stories. So any of those things that you wanna share, of course, that's especially impactful. Um, and as Dave mentioned, I think we would hear too, as, you know, that our, our legislators express that they are very supportive and so hopefully that will continue forward. Um, so that's where we are at with that budget bill and we will know by the end of May.
I was gonna ask you, so where is that bill at, at the moment?
Appropriations.
Okay, so it's in the Senate currently?
It's at the Senate.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's, the state does not know what's going to happen federally. And so, and I don't know how this usually works, because if you look at the other bills, and I have looked a lot, the budget bills are used to this. They all get aligned and commented and all this stuff, nothing has happened, because I just don't think that they know exactly, you know, what they're doing from the federal government where they sit in that area either. I, it has not been marked up at all. And I don't know what that means for the budget bill, but I don't know.
Well, they, in fairness to them, they're, they're, they're looking at a gigantic problem with Medicaid.
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 Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
In terms of funding. And that just permeates all the discussions about the budget, so. But we're watching it and we'll keep you knowledgeable of, uh, movement in that regard. Hopefully we will succeed in securing the continuation of the funding. Um, some other ones, and this is. Some other ones, and this is one that's near and dear to my heart. Uh, right now, under Indiana law, uh, your birth certificate, uh, is a confidential record for seventy-five years, uh, at which point, uh, it's a public record. There's a legislature who thinks that, uh, we should increase that to ninety-nine years. And concerning the fact that I'm seventy-seven, uh, that would mean mine would be confidential again. Right now, anybody could walk in here, ask for Dave Holland's birth certificate and, uh, might disclose some things that I'm not interested in disclosing. But anyway, that's something that seems to have some support, uh, in, in the legislature. Uh, another bill that, uh, is still live, uh, involves the, uh, creation of a statewide, uh, regulatory speed, um, uh, for, uh, food trucks. Susan, we have some concerns just because we don't know how that will play out, but.
It looks like, uh, if you wanted a statewide permit, you pay four hundred fifty dollars.
So that complicates your life. And without, and, and what do we formally get paid for all of this work?
Still, they capped us at two hundred last year, so that's in line with that. So hopefully that leaves the same people who normally permit, but what it does take away is anybody who didn't kind of permit. Then we would charge a single day permit fee. Now, what we can do is charge inspection fees, which in the past, we have not had in our fee schedule, which we will implement. But then, then that means that we'll have to wait for them to take money in the deal, because obviously we do not have to take cash or something. For obvious purposes, for their protection and, and ours and everybody's. Um, and so I would suspect, because it does, though this is core in the past, and then there are parts that take effect, you know, in July.
Oh, this year?
Till twenty twenty-seven. So we will have some, but we will probably be coming before you requesting them, um, inspection fees.
Because this affects our sustainability, right? This affects our bottom line, we, this is somewhat how we remain independent with these, these things that we charge and forward. So this is cutting into that, right?
Because it's supposed to work, but anything you said, it costs, you do it. But then, never fails, especially on the food and environmental side, you know, it's hopeful, it's not, and then they commit, and they have what you charge.
That's the thing that's most talking to me, that we, we constantly get told home rule, home rule, each county develops what they want for themselves. But this is just both with the environmental, uh, foods, coming, the state says so. The home rule kind of goes under the table now. I appreciate you being proactive, I know you reached out to legislators and different people to ask for them to reconsider some of these choices. Uh, and I, you know, it bothers me to make such a big, bigger struggle for each local department. But it is what it is, I suppose.
We continue to monitor that and we'll keep each of you with, uh. We're also monitoring the House Bill fifteen sixty-two that has made it out in the House and the Senate. And this is the cook in your backyard, we call it, okay? This bill opens up, uh, the ability to cook food at home, uh, for sale. Uh, and then in a strange modification of that, says that you can do that as long as you don't make more than one million five hundred thousand dollars a year.
No sweat there.
I know our, I, I'm laughing cuz I'd be crying one night. I know our staff has some concerns.
Can you share with us what, what this, what this means? Maybe go into detail. Yeah, I want a detail. This sounds worrisome.
Well, and also, I mean, anything, uh, so that's what, so, but.
Oh, wow, okay. Thank God, yeah.
Swedish meatball.
No, no.
But, I mean, our vendors are very limited, you know, everything right now that they do has to be shut stable. It doesn't, where this opening it up to refrigerators, they could, yeah, serve anything, you know, a lot of these would, you know, they're self-heated, they could sell anything that we would try and refrigerate. And we are very limited in what we can do. Um, it seems like a lot of it has to be done, but there are some foodborne effects related to, uh, they do not know how to come in. It's, it's also, you need a company here. So it is very exciting, also, I feel like a lot of people would be like, ah, I don't need a permit anymore. Fill it anywhere, sell out of the truck, so, geez, Molly, that is, that is dumb.
So these, they don't need a permit at all for any of them? For people making products from their home?
From their home.
As long as it's not meat?
And, and will also have to ask for their, uh, federal income tax return as well. Uh, you may think of that, one million five hundred thousand dollars a year, mom and pop cooking corn in the backyard.
We have restaurants that we're going home.
But anyway, that's one that is, raises to another level of concern. Carrie, are there others you'd like to bring up? Okay, well, that's what we face, um, and we'll continue to fight for the good cause. We will keep you informed.
So this, this one in particular has made it through?
Yes. It went from the House to the Senate and has been worked for many of our.
So they have all pushed, they've been okay with this, this has gone through?
Everyone we talked about is at that stage, I mean. I guess in, in closing, I'd simply say that you can't sleep until the legislature's gone home. Because what happens is, uh, these things that maybe never got out of committee, uh, at eleven fifty-eight on the last night of the legislative session, uh, when half of them have gone home already, uh, somebody puts one of these in that didn't get out of committee. Uh, I, I don't know if you are aware of this, but it could be a good thing and a bad thing. We have a national park in Porter County. Because what our congressman did at the eleventh hour in a bill. One sentence. And we have one of sixty-two or sixty-three national parks. So it isn't always bad, but it usually is. We need to watch those and we will continue to watch them and keep you advised. And any way you can be proactive, especially on the budget bill, uh, would be incredibly important as we fight the good fight. A report, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, are we recommending any of our, like, counselors, the county counselor, anyone, uh, reaching out to the legislative about this, um, health department?
I can't put myself in a position where I'm discouraging anyone.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I didn't know if we've reached out to them as well.
Thank you for bringing that up, because that was actually one of the questions that I was going to ask you, as I certainly was going to send that statement around.
I think it can go out to all of us, yeah, the, our, the board, the county council, the commission. I think our, 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 you know, community partners, just like when we started this process in the first place, all the people that we begged to go to the budget, then approved this funding. Um, and now for us to share the impact that this funding has had. Um, in reading things that Senator Charbonneau has said or speaking to him, some of the feedback is, you know, they haven't seen the return of investment yet, but as we know, working in public health, we're not changing obesity numbers in two years. We're not, you know, these things in terms of, you know, trauma and injury prevention, chronic health, and all of that. These are things that we know that are going to be generational in terms of finding those types of rewards. So it's kind of an unfair burden that, you know, we've kind of been given in terms of response to this funding. So I think the more our legislators, I know our local people are, are in support of it, but more, you know, the more we can get this out, they can take our letters and give it to the, to others too, uh, of the impact that we've seen and that we've shared and that we've worked together. Um, and why this is important to continue, um, you know, cuz the concept of it not existing at all is just terrifying. Yeah, and it's, um, and it's really puts a burden on the county, counties throughout the state. Well, and I think, you know, that's the big take-home message for all of this stuff. When we hear federal cuts, then it comes to the state, and if the state cuts and it comes to us, I mean, these, these, we, these things need to be taken care of. We can't pretend like these things don't. And so the more we all work together, the more smooth this process goes.
And, and the email is that you guys have the annual report in front of you tonight, but also I have texted that. Um, spreadsheet that all of our, provided in twenty twenty-four to help the people injured back. And the link to our website, our success stories are on there, our partners as well. So just kind of some information for reference, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Well, we'll all be paying attention, I suppose. Uh, so next up, we all should have had a chance to sign our claims and receipts, if I can have a motion to approve the claims and receipt.
To approve.
Yes.
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 Sylvia?
Yes. You, so moving on to reports of committee staff and health officer, I have, um, a matter. I was contacted by Soonav, who is our county appointee to the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission. Um, she reached out to me as a member of the Board of Health, um, to discuss, uh, this ethics training seminar that, uh, gets held in Mariville once a year. Uh, traditionally, all of the county entities, um, have been invited, it's a dinner, a symposium, a speaker, um, I believe at the Avalon, um, and so she, she's a new appointee to this commission. So she wanted to expand upon Porter County's involvement and attendance to this. So she sent the invite out to us, which we will share with all of you if you're interested in attending this, um, this dinner. It's at the last Thursday in May, I believe, at Avalon in Mariville. Um, and with this, we'll have the link that you can register to go if you choose to attend. I'm planning to attend to represent us if anyone, I know sometimes people from the, from the health department go every year. Um, so if there's anyone that joins me, send me a, send me a message, um, if you're available to go. So look out for that email that, um, Carrie will disseminate up that came from Soonav. Then moving on, um, will be Sam. And Megan Judy to report on Community Change Center, this is cool stuff.
Everybody will be real tired of me by the end of the.
No, you're awesome, we appreciate you.
Oh, are, yeah, okay, here we go.
Demetrius got our slides. Alright, so actually, um, I put this brief presentation together for a really exciting spotlight presentation I got to do with IDOH. So, um, if you can go to the next slide, Demetrius, for me, this, I think that you all already have a general background of the organization from when this initially pushed through, but we're, I wanted to introduce Megan Judy to everyone. Um, she is our new reentry program coordinator that you all generously funded for year one. Um, so, but just in case anybody wasn't here when all of this.
We do have new members.
Do, okay, perfect, so to give a quick background of the organization, the Community Change Center is a nonprofit that I started back in twenty nineteen. At that time, uh, I was running reentry programming in Porter County Juvenile Detention and Westville Correctional Facility. And I was really seeing a need for comprehensive reentry services that starts when people are incarcerated and then helps them transition, transition back out in the community and provides wraparound services to reduce the likelihood that they recidivate. So, uh, when, at this point, uh, when the organization began, I bought a nonprofits for dummies book on eBay and somehow filed everything correctly, and we had no money and resources and very little support. But, um, this is what we have at this point in time, so we still run our pre-release program in Westville, we're in there every Thursday, uh, doing life skills and building a community with, with the guys, so then when they come back, some of them to Porter County, um, then we, we continue working with them. We have two transitional living homes in Gary, one has been open for about two years. And actually, my favorite thing of the org is that we operate so full circle. So the house, the live-in house manager in that home actually was in our original group in Westfield Prison like seven years ago. Um, so we're opening the second reentry home here in the next month or two. We run a unity cafe out of Living Hope Church in Valpo, so we do weekly recovery connection, sends us a recovery coach, they run a support group, and then we do free community dinner, uh, at, at the church every Friday. We serve approximately eighty people every week, many are struggling with substance use or mental health, homelessness, usually all of the issues. Um, but we also get a lot of people that have no idea what issues are in the community that come in. So then it's really been an eye-opener and, and kind of a relationship builder for people that typically wouldn't engage with each other. Uh, we also, the adult education program, we just assist with facilitating, uh, that one is in Gary in partnership with Neo and Portage. We do Second Chance Saturdays, that's our annual expungement fair. So a lot of people actually qualify for an automatic expungement after a certain amount of time since they're offense, but they cost usually thousands of dollars, so there's a lot of people that miss out on job opportunities because they can't afford an expungement. So we have, we partner with attorneys who do that pro bono for twenty to thirty people, uh, bouncing between Lake and Porter Counties each year. We also have a Voices of Reentry podcast, uh, so as we have people that are released from incarceration back in the community, once they're stable and doing well, we give them a chance to have a platform to share their voice and their experience. Uh, one, to kind of reduce stigma in the community, and two, to show other people that are returning post-incarceration, hey, there is hope for me. Uh, we're also working on building the statewide support network, so the only organization in Indiana that is really, is similar to ours, and they've been around for a few decades, so their, their pace is operating on a larger scale. But they're the only one, so if you're not returning to Marion County after incarceration, then for most people, they're just out of luck. So we, I think, I might have mentioned, whenever I talked about the food truck last time, I'm really striving, we're striving to create the homeboy industries of Northwest Indiana. So Homeboy is based in LA, uh, they're the largest gang rehab reentry program in the world. And so after Megan speaks, then I'll kind of, uh, sh- share the, the large-scale vision of all this. And then lastly, um, so, the, with the support network though, we are, at this point, because there's such a limited amount of reentry programs that exist in our state, we're finding that people from all over the state reach out to us and say, hey, what's available in my area? So we're really trying to have resources available, no matter where somebody's returning, returning to post-incarceration, which we actually encounter a lot in our Porter County jail as well. And then lastly, we have our breaking the cycle merchandise line, we got a small grant through Eli Lilly that, uh, allowed us to start pushing out, we, it's actually happening in my basement right now, like, but, um, we're creating apparel that eventually will turn into a job for our clients to create it, so we sell that, and they all say breaking the cycle. So it's a stigma, you know, for stigma reduction, but also to generate employment. So that is what we had going on, and then through HFI funds, we were able to hire Megan. And Megan, in the first two months that we've had, or she's done what I've been trying to do for like three and a half years. So if we can go to the next slide, Demetrius, and then Megan will kind of share what she's been working on and then all tie it into our long-term vision here.
Yeah, so I just wanna say, first of all, thank you, because I wouldn't care without you guys, so I appreciate it very much. Um, in the first two months of my employment with Sam, I have hit the ground running. So first of all, in February, we opened our reentry support office hours. So Sam had this lovely idea of having walk-in availability, so not having to make an appointment, we were just available. So we started out with three days a week that is still currently, you know, we're still currently doing that as we're trying to build our clientele. Um, so we operate three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursdays from ten to two. And just as a result of that, we have seven ongoing clients and up to forty contacts in, just in the past month. So we are taking care of our clients, we're also working through community partnerships to make sure that we can service them the best. So we're working like, um, with programs such as like Gabriel's Horn and Salvation Army, and they are great referral sources. So anytime they can't figure something out, they contact me and we work together to figure it out. So I think really the case management piece, reentry support, has been really great for the community because we are all working together. Um, as a part of these reentry support services, we are really starting to look at employment. So we obviously have fresh starts, which is our second chance employment, but we really wanted an in-house education piece to kind of further along some of the clients that we're working with. So we came up with Set for Success, which is a workforce readiness, um, development program that we are working, currently working on the curriculum and getting ready to roll that out in the next couple of months. So it'll be a two-week-long, um, six-day, uh, program, very much dedicated to anything and everything that a person could need, um, skill level, soft skill level-wise, for going back out into the workforce. Um, at the end, they'll get a, um, you know, certificate that says that they work through all of this, and then we'll connect them with our Second Chance Employment Network, which we are currently cultivating. Um, we've been reaching out to, um, employers in the area, local employment, um, opportunity. Um, we've been reaching out to, um, employers in the area, local employment, um, opportunities, kind of getting them to talk about, um, you know, second chance employment, what that looks like for them. Um, and then also, you know, presenting them the research that, you know, sometimes people with justice involved backgrounds make the best employees, the most loyal employees. Um, so we're starting to have those conversations. Now granted, this has only been two months in, so we're still working on it. Um, and then the other thing that we are really working hard on is getting together life skills workshops. So we are setting up, um, we're looking toward, uh, June, starting these where we are offering them to our clientele. Um, and also the clientele of Recovery Connection and the community, opening them up to, um, having workshop leaders come in and teach them skills that are beneficial to just learning how to do everyday things. So financial literacy, um, creative coping, um, you know, mental health crisis services, things like that. Um, which we'll be can, doing once monthly at the start, hopefully twice a month if we're lucky. Um, so we'll bring, you know, pillars of our community in to have them teach these one to two hour workshops every month. Um, the other thing that I am super proud of is the Neighborhood Mentorship Program. That is the, probably one of the biggest programs that we're working on right now. We are taking justice-involved individuals, so someone who has had any type of justice involvement, whether that be from a career basis, so previous law enforcement officers or people who have experienced jail or prison time. So we're bringing them in, um, to be mentors to young adult populations who are kind of headed toward that type of life. Um, so we're doing it very uniquely. We're creating organic relationships between, um, those individuals. So we're not using the terms mentor, mentee, we're just using the neighborhood. So we're creating those very organic, um, kind of, you, you know, upstream preventative measures to these young adults. Um, so I'm very excited about that. That's my baby. I will be very honest about that. Um, and, you know, we're looking to, uh, do the mentor orientation this coming, this month, actually, it's April. Um, the end of this month and rolling out the kickoff of our program in May.
And I just wanted to say too, um, as we rolled out that program, we were, the neighborhood specifically, we were really trying to focus on the young adults that are often falling through the cracks because they, you can't say to them, you know, they just got out of JDC. You can't say, I'm gonna pair you with a mentor. They're really gonna help you. They don't want a mentor. They don't think they need a mentor in most cases. Um, but, so we were focusing, I was focusing on the benefit that it would have to the young people who are the mentees. Um, and what I really didn't fully anticipate was the impact that it would have on the mentors in the program. So one of them did an interview with Megan and like twenty minutes later messaged me on Facebook and all he said was, thank you so much. I really needed that. So the ability for them to give back, um, and help the next person is, has, has proven really, uh, really impactful as well. And as far as the second chance employment goes, um, like I said, we have that apparel line that that will be a ways off before it generates enough funding to keep hiring people. But the food truck, if you drive by Living Hope on Calumet where we do the Unity Cafe, um, we partnered with them. And so we, it's housed there. Um, so if you wanted to go see it, that is the actual picture. Sam Corrata for us a couple of weeks ago. So, um, we're doing an unveiling, which is, will be on the last slide that you're all, I hope you can attend. Um, we're doing that on April twenty sixth and then we'll roll out and start spring in May. So that's coming along really well. Our, our plan is to start out with a few employees and then once we know exactly how much profit it's bringing in to be able to have a full timer and a handful of part timers on that truck. So we're very close to launching it. Um, but we, without Megan, without the funding for Megan for this year, we absolutely could not, could not be where we are. So thank you. And then if we can go, yes, thanks. So big picture here, um, we have all these moving components. Like I said, when I was up here a little bit ago, um, we have one more MCE to get in contract with. I know with all of the questions about Medicaid, um, our board has been a little bit nervous, but I think our saving grace is that we are already, we already work with Recovery Works. So Recovery Works through DMHA provides some funding for our reentry homes. And once we are a full Medicaid provider and in contract with all the entities, then Recovery Works, um, we're in the process of becoming a Level Four provider rather than a Level Three. And so that opens a whole, uh, a door of a ton of billing options that then allows the services Megan's providing to become billable and lets us be self-sufficient. Uh, and then we'll be generating the employment through the Second Chance Employment Program. Uh, and then really, uh, I can't remember if I said it when I was here last time or not, but just in the several years that I've been doing this and working within, within law enforcement and also with the nonprofit sector, I've really seen this new recognition and partnership between the two where law enforcement's starting to recognize, you, we, we can and should provide all these services while people, people are on the inside. But then if we don't have all the services or when they come out, then, you know, it's, a lot of them are still gonna keep going back. And so I've seen a huge shift in, in just the awareness and the support between local government and law enforcement for this type of work. And so I think that all three of these combined is gonna be what allows us to actually create that homeboy of the region. And then on the last, oh, just kidding. So that's our contact info. If anybody wants to learn more on the next slide. This is our invite to the food truck. Um, I included it in the email, so hopefully you got the personalized version of that too. But, um, I would love for, love if you can make it. I want to make sure we have enough food. So if you are SVP, that would be great. But, does anybody have questions?
What is the menu like?
Oh, yeah, good question. Yeah, I forgot. So in our long-term vision, uh, part of the homeboy model in their employment, they have their homegirl cafe. So it's actually in their headquarters. And so that's what we're working towards is a, a full, like a full diner so that we can employ larger numbers of people and we can be addressing the stigma by inviting people into this environment where they know they're being served by justice-involved people. So they're able to put that human face to a population that can seem really scary. Um, so because we're working on the diner, uh, and I had no idea what I was doing coming into it, we started with the small scale with the same menu that we would then expand to the diner. So we're doing diner style with Chicago hot dogs and cheese steaks. And we have like four different types of burgers and loaded fries and all this stuff that probably isn't the right thing to be talking about here, but, but it will be tasty. And they'll do yoga after to help mitigate that. Anything else?
So do you have data at all about recidivism rate and the way that this impacts that?
That's a great question. So IDOC puts it at about thirty percent. If you look at all of, you know, castle, carceral facilities, then it's more like between eighty and ninety percent. So it's really, the difficulty in that, that Community Change Center has in, is tra- in tracking our data is because recidivism can be measured different ways. A lot of agencies tend to measure it over a span of three years. So unfortunately, like once Megan has clients for a longer period of time, we can track recidivism among them. But I will say just in the, the men who are in our pre-release program, and then especially if they're returning to Lake or Porter County and they move into our homes, like phenomenal, you know, because we're working so closely together that there, it's pretty rare that somebody we've worked with intensely returns. You know, they, that they get rearrested. So it's working. Um, it's just really hard to show it in numbers in terms, especially with her clientele right now. But eventually we will absolutely have that.
You have to start somewhere.
Yeah, yes.
I was almost wondering if, do you guys keep track, I mean, I'm assuming you guys keep track of who's been incarcerated and then repeatedly incarcerated after?
Yes. And because we're dealing with, it's all the justice-involved population, but it's different. It's significantly different if you look at the jail population versus the prison population. And because we work with both, it's even harder to track. Um, I mean, usually if they've gone, what we see among our clients is that once they've served prison time and we've worked with, we have worked with them for longer, they're not going back nearly as frequently than the ones who are cycling in and out of the jail. Uh, which is really who, largely who Megan is here to work with to break that cycle because we have never had anything if they're not on probation. And it really, a probation officer can't even afford, like have the time to deal with somebody in the capacity that Megan will. So that's what, that's what we have been missing and what her position really is designed to address is largely those cycling in and out of jail. So we, we'll have numbers one of these days.
Cause I just know, having been, you know, several times in the reentry program in Westville, I've had lots of students over the years work there, been there many times, attended a lot of their classes. And so this is a very needed thing. And, and talking to a lot of the men that were there, because that wasn't only men. Uh, but, you know, the recidivism rate was really high.
Yeah.
So this can cut that down.
Absolutely.
Be great.
Yeah, it's amazing really how many large, since Megan was hired, even the amount of like federally funded large agencies that reach out to us and say, our clients cannot get hired anywhere. Can you help us? And at this point, I mean, she's doing case management with them, but we really, we know that we need the employment programming and to build out the employer network to be able to address it on a larger scale. So that's why she's so pivotal to the process.
Thank you guys for all your hard work. This is amazing.
Incredible.
Thank you for making it possible.
Yes, well done. Well done. Thank you.
Hope to see you on twenty sixth.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. You, you know, the rest of these you could, you direct, how they order. They're all yours.
So I was able to look at some of the analytics from twenty twenty-four and then compare them to where we are now. We've been doing a lot of work getting, um, categories figured out, make sure things, categories correct. Um, identifying who's a network member as part of the Community Resource Network, an affiliate who may not come to the meetings, but we know is a good credible resource, um, and are engaged with some of us that are members. And then most recently, we identified a resource. So maybe they're not local to Porter County, but they're somebody that Sam refers to. I refer to a lot, but, um, we want to make sure they're appearing closer to top of the search. So that's where we came up with resource. Some of the categories will pull ninety different resources, but those include local, other counties, and then federal listings. So to make it easier to navigate, because when somebody's searching, they're not gonna wanna go through page and page and page. So, um, we've been working to do that. In twenty twenty-four, we had over three thousand users of the website. And then in comparing the first three months of last year to this year, the number has almost doubled. So as we continue to spread the word, individuals start, um, adding it to the website or signature and like that. Um, I think it'll grow. And then searches in Porter County, that has almost doubled as well compared to the first three months of last year when we had first started out to this year. And then, um, on the back of that page, uh, you can see some of the most commonly searched items such as food pantries, emergency and temporary shelter, um, financial assistance and things like that, which I know aligns with a lot of work I make and resources that I give to individuals. Um, and so that's kind of the nutshell of everything for twenty twenty-four to current. And Sam has some good testimonies. I've worked with the center township trustee a lot to get it added to their signature, to get it added to their website. And then, um, Sam gets a lot of feedback. And I'll let you talk about that. Sorry.
Yeah, no. So I, a lot of times this feels like running a marathon and we wanted to move way faster than it does. And so this was really awesome. Um, about a month ago, I was giving a presentation to Sunrise Buones. And, um, I, I didn't know a lot of the people in the room and this, um, they, at the beginning of their meetings, they do a little like a happy moment of the week. And she said, her happy moment was knowing that Saint Vincent de Pa can refer to this. She said, how much easier has made life for their volunteers when they know how, how and where to direct their, people that are seeking services from them to resources? And they never had that before. So that was a good reminder and pickup for me, that, that it is working in the community. And, uh, when we had our la- our Community Resource Network meeting last week, um, afterwards, Monica with Juvenile Services came up and said that a lot of the families that, that they, that are not, the kid is not on probation, so they're not actually servicing the family. She said, it's been hugely helpful for their officers to be able to point them to the Find Help site so that the family is given resources even if they're not being serviced through the agency. So that was uplifting as well. And then I know that just personally, myself and Ellen, the second police social worker at the sheriff's office, use this all the time. We used to sort through, uh, like a hundred eighty-page document and, you know, piecemeal that out for people. And so it's just been amazing to have one place to send everybody and know they're getting uniform, correct referrals.
And I use it all the time too. And one of the things with the analytics, I'm in it multiple times a day. So it was nice to see that I'm not counted each time I'm in it throughout the day. I've counted as one user. And, um, yeah, you guys have any questions about?
I would, um, would we consider like some sort of like social media like, uh, promotion that we could share? You know, like this is Find Help, this is what it entails. And like my office page could share that or the Y could share that. You know, something like that. I've not seen that exist. Does it exist or was it a long time ago that I've seen?
Um, we have cards where we can, um, share what the website is or to claim your page. When I do Porter County Suicide Prevention Task Force pages, I'll often reference that. As if you're looking for resources for mental health or anything else, you can go to the website. But I think definitely, since we have the website where we want it to be and, um, have made a lot of progress with it, I think that would be our next step, definitely.
Demetrius made, it's been a while, but I know you made, you made quite a few campaigns like that, especially when we were getting rolling.
It begin, in the beginning.
We've also had it on our agenda to, in, in the, this spring, to roll out a card claim campaign and really start publicizing it. We wanted to make sure it was in a good spot.
Right.
Filtering correctly before we really pushed it out. But back, I mean, it's been over a year at this point. Like we talked with the libraries about putting on, on their computers and possibly the kiosks around town, putting it everywhere so that it's.
Robin, I don't remember which one of you brought up, like to have it in the ER, you know?
Yeah, I, I mean, honestly, one of the things, I have some of this, the little magnets in my office that I put up on the doors. The problems are just so small. Things, I, I used to be a pharmaceutical rep, so I'm pretty good at like putting things on people's doors and doctors' offices. One of the things that, that worked really well was the self-clingy.
Yeah.
Like, like big posters. I think if you guys could do something like that, I'm sure there would be a lot of emergency rooms, doctors' offices. It's not permanent, exactly. Glass doors, they're like the self-clingy with the, with the URL or the QR code.
Or where people check in.
Right. That would absolutely, I'm su- I'm, I'm sure, you know, Power's Health would absolutely be okay with something like that because it's not advertising a commercial product, but, but yeah, it's something that would be helpful for patients.
I think our CRN members seem to, now that it, the website is like, especially with the favorites folders that are new, now that we're in a better spot with the site, then we've seen a lot of our CRN members say, hey, can Carrie help us like embedded in our email signature? So I think you just helped juvenile services do that today, right? So that's helping push it out there a lot.
And have the QR code?
Yes, we have several QR codes. So we have what's called ref tags. We're not IT people, so not.
Yeah.
But it's, it's basically the portercounty/findhelp.com and then it references, um, email signature. So we're able to see, um, in our analytics, how many people are getting to it from the email signature. And I didn't wanna give you too much, um, so I can certainly.
What has been the most successful that where people go to it from?
The, the email signature and, and, um, probably our magnets.
Okay.
Um, but we also created one for juvenile probation. So we can let them know, hey, how, you know, how it's going. Um, and then trustees, so the.
Yeah.
These has one specific, so that hopefully we can get that buy-in for them to add it to their page so they can see it as making a difference.
Like I, I would envision like North Shore, Health Link.
Right.
You know, those types of.
Right.
Establishments too.
That thing comes all the time and I think they, I don't know where their marketing team is at with that, but yeah.
Know her, so I can, and check with her. I'll be honest, sometimes it gets challenging because the bigger the organization, the higher up it has to go.
I remember that with Porter when we were talking. Yes, yeah.
And CoAction had a change, so I don't believe it got on their website either. So, um, but we certainly keep trying.
Yeah, all we can do.
And yeah, we're definitely, I like the window cling. I just created something for another group I'm part of. So we can definitely make something for that.
Uh, one more thing, you know, I think part of the problem is that Find Help sounds wonderful, but I think people don't know what that means, right? So part of the video potentially, Demetrius, like having something like meet this, Find Help, meet this, Find Help, having that video just to instruct people what it is, right, when they click on it. So they can understand what it is, I think would be ideal too, because it's so broad that I don't think people realize that. Find Help for what? Right?
And do you have it at like Valpo University, Ivy Tech, like those places as well? Cause I mean, I know a lot of college students are very reticent, um, but they'll come up to me after class and they'll be like, hey, Dr. B, you tell me like how it is. And I, you know, and like, so like, I know very often that there's a lot going on that we don't assume, you know, in college students' lives and then their families' lives. So I don't know if, you know, we have the ability to push it out beyond just K through twelve, but also in our, um, you know, college groups, because there's a lot of insecurity, food insecurity and housing insecurity, transportation insecurity especially.
Yeah.
And so one of the things. And so one of the things that um Valpo University funded when they co-sponsored was uh landing place for college students. And I think you can see it on your computer screen, where we have our shortcuts and we do have college students. Um, and honestly, we need the community's help and your help with helping to promote it as well. Um, but I definitely think there's room for more social media promotion and getting the uh magnets, creating some window clings. And then I can work with Demetrius to do another video, just navigating some search. We haven't in our initial video, but we can definitely expand on it, especially since we've added so much to it.
Excellent work.
Very good. Yes, I know.
Just amazing.
For of love.
Amazing.
We had a manager change, so in the middle. So we've gotten used to a new one. Um, we have every other week meetings. And then Ellen, who also works with Sam um at the Sheriff's Department, so we're meeting now every other week on the off weeks just um so we can get things going. They've added program management so that we as administrators can now go in and edit programs. I kind of think we're a pilot for that, I, because we are so involved in our site and wanting to get it to where, where it's to be and easy to search.
Very good.
It has been cool to, we, like they, it's good to see them asking for our feedback on the process. So I, I don't know if you sat in on one of them yet or not, but I got to do this fo- like Find Help focus session back a few weeks ago. And like, they were asking, how is it going for your county? What would you like to see? And so um I think that's promising in the grand scheme of things and trying to hopefully get more counties on board with this. So it becomes, you know, easier to recognize the people.
Very good. Well done.
I mean, this makes me want to move to Porter County.
Maybe you should.
Do you want something like this in my monthly report, some of these, or just updates maybe?
I like it all personally. I like all the data.
Okay. I don't want to give you too much.
There's, I, to me, there's no such.
There's a lot, but I can do something specifically for Find Help, or maybe give you some different.
And you can do quarterly, you know.
Don't work yourself to death.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to create more.
Well, I don't want to give you more work either, so. All right.
Thank you, guys. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's exciting to see it from its inception to get to this point.
All right, so I will tick through these things very.
Thank you.
Um, so we talked about uh help for C and the current um state budget, but I do want to give an update on uh grant funding. So uh as you know, when we did the budget, budget presentations, we do have a few CDC pass through grants that will remain. And our immunization grant was partially funded with uh federal COVID pass through funds. So that was pulled suddenly last week, um in the middle of our grant cycle. And we're told to cease using any of the funding and to submit it uh and by Friday. And so we've done that, but we did just learn today that a proportion of that funding was actually state funding. And so Chris, just a moment before we came upstairs, but we think we're going to be able to recapture a part of that. And we still will have um that to spend, whatever we spend of that by the end of June. So just kind of want to do an update on that.
So the federing, federal portion pulled, but the state portion still exists.
That is what we were led to believe by the spreadsheet that's sent out.
Everything is kind of a work in progress.
It is, it is.
Head on a swivel.
Brought up someone in choir, and so they sent out, so we're kind of waiting. We are going to get clarification on that, because we obviously don't want to spend something that.
Can you, can you explain to everyone, because I was, I was confused by what this money can be used for? I think this use of like, it's COVID money, makes it sound like we're using it for like COVID vaccines, and that's not the case at all.
Correct.
So if you can explain what this money.
So of course, and you guys know, because you create a lot of, I'm sure there are alarms and things like that. What the pandemic brought to light were a lot of um health disparities and access um and outcomes and things like that. So a lot of funding is passed along to address those things in multitude of different ways. Um, and so when we're talking about our immunization grant, a portion of it is what was um granted to the states we used through what they got twenty twenty seven to further outreach, um not just vaccinations, but of all different kinds. We just haven't get this portion of this money um as a part of that grant to go out into the community and increase access um of all required recommended immunizations. Um, but.
So it doesn't pay for the vaccines, but it pays for the support and programming of vaccines.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, we are not allowed to purchase vaccine out of. The only fund that we can purchase um vaccine out of is um, well, our Health First Indiana Fund. So our, our actual budget funding, so not our grant funding, so. Um, so yes, so that is where we're at on that um this morning and all the last week, we didn't think that we had any of it. And fortunately for us, we had restructured nursing department, we don't currently have part-time nursing doing that. And so it, it was.
Because a lot of health departments, this is how they fund their nursing, was with these grants.
There were health departments where people were called in the next, immediately let go. Um, so that is where that stands. Now, also last week, we need um requests that we apply for local um area grants. And so I would just like to say briefly about those and confirm that it would be okay if we pursue those. Um, one of them, the Hub Coalition, so our Porter County Substance Abuse um Council, they're bringing the Hub, contacted us and they do grants each year to local organizations that are their partner organizations. And they actually asked us to apply on behalf of that adults and supports and knowledge initiative that we are partnered with the Tobacco Coalition, um actually the Hub Juvenile Justice Services, and um apply for that grant funding. So the maximum award for that in any category is fourteen thousand dollars. And they actually asked us to apply in the justice or juvenile justice area. And so the idea is that we would support the things that we're currently doing already um through J D. Out in schools and juvenile justice services, other youth-serving organizations, but also put on symposiums for empowering parents. And so it would be all about notifying parents of what their current respective factors are in their community, um giving them ideas for communicators, um skills for communication with their kiddos, and then also how they can provide protective factors. So how they can talk to their kids, how they can provide those protective factors. Um, and so that's one of the, the grants that we'd like to pursue on.
This is what, you're calling this a local grant? Where does this funding originate from?
So I believe it is funding that um Hub gets from C D C. Is it Lilac? Okay.
So it's not government funded?
Well, I. Okay.
Sorry.
I thought it was C D C.
I caught you off, off guard. Well, you just, just keep hearing cut, 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 cut.
Thing that they currently have, so it's.
Okay.
They're waiting on, this would be.
Okay.
Next year, because I confirmed that as well.
Yeah.
Actually, um their request for proposal came out with a really short turnaround time because of that.
Okay. So they have the money on hand to?
Yes. Yes.
I don't want to poll after we say yes.
That is one. Um, the other one is a first things first opportunity. Um, and Chris is working on that one right now, as well as one for Juvenus. Um, so the first things first would be um first things sleep. So in partnership with. So sleep sacks, car seats, um and those Roth ID tags that we discussed. And so um the idea for that is we are part of, we have a car seat safety grant. And we get car seats, but those car seats are um convertible and booster seats. And they don't give infant car seats. And the reason is because the infants can technically go in the convertible seats. Um, but as we all know, who have had infants or, or taken care of an infant, that's extremely difficult.
Yeah.
Create a brand new baby home.
For sure.
And so we do purchase car seats. It's a bunch of, a small budget item in Health First Indiana. But if we could um request you this grant to get some infant car seats, then that would be, because we do get, we get referrals from the hospital.
Yeah, I know she has, you go out there all the time.
Hospital and actually do the bidding, that's what she needs to do and deliver the car seat. And then of course the Roth ID tag so that we can further that, make sure every car seat comes born in all of our birth bags. So the bags that they get, um when the kids are born as well. Uh, and we used to be able to get sleep sacks when the state back is, we aren't able to get anymore, that we get a lot of the cost for, and that we sent home all of those bags. So um that is that grant. And then Juvenus, um we were starting safe sitter classes. And so it would help to provide uh materials for those classes and kits. So with like a safe sitter kit, that would include, you are staying in there, would include activity, CPR mask. Just a nice kit that we can give each of those sitters when they bring that home. And then also writing for, funding for more little kids.
Okay, good.
Um, so just kind of a way they love that. They've never heard of anything like that.
Good, good.
Excited when they went to the grant meeting.
Good.
Um, if you guys would um be okay with, with like.
Do we need board, do we need a board approval to um?
We just like to know that you guys are.
That board approval for you to reach out through these grants, is that what the approval?
So they're all grants that they've contacted us. Just, you know, it's not something that we.
Need to.
Had historically done in the past.
Yeah.
Just like to make sure that, you know, you guys are aware and are approving that we, uh, you know, would pursue and, you know, take in these other funds. There are new funds that we have to go and create and um fund actually for the received into.
New line items budget?
Exactly.
Okay. So I guess, I mean, I think we would all be for this, but if, when we get to the point of creating a line item to the budget, if it comes through, then we approve the monies at that point in time? Or do we vote today for all of this?
It, so it could be pretty fast. The turnaround on particularly the help one is very quick. And so I think we would probably have to, if we were awarded that grant, maybe even go to the next commissioners maybe.
Good. Okay, so. So you'd want a board vote? Okay, so the proposal would be um to approve the reaching out for these local grant services um in regards to the Hub, first things first, Juvenus and immunization grants?
So just the Hub, the first things first, and the Juvenus grant?
Okay.
Just an update on our.
Okay, so I, I make a motion for that. Yes.
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 Sylvia?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So you'll inform us when those come through, and with each of those, we'll have to present to, is it the council or the commissioners who get them?
So it would be the commissioners, if it has to create a new fund.
Okay.
Go into a brand new fund, create a fund, that they have to do that.
Okay.
An ordinance.
Okay.
So it, unless they can go into an existing fund, and then it would definitely be the council to appropriate before we can spend.
Okay.
So, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, good work. That's great.
Thank you. Get some advice of a pastor.
Yeah.
Chris, lots of hard work. So in Ally, um, that works with us, the Tobacco Coalition for the Hub grant, she's really been working in anticipation for that, and that, I mean, the turnouts are going so fast, it's like, we're going to be able to pursue this week. We're ready to help, so um just really appreciate everybody, all the hard work on that. Um, for the Hope for Wellness portal, I know we, we talked portal, we're really excited. We got pricing, and then we said, okay, we're going to build our own portal. So since then, we met with IT, and then ladies says come to me, and he just has not even been able to get started. So then Linda Passmore, who's from C W S, reached back, and also she, that's the portal developer. And they just were so excited because nothing like this, to their knowledge, has been done by a county. And they just really kind of want to be in on the groundbreaking. And so she, we really had a conversation, and she basically said, we will do it for what we can do it for and not lose money. So in the meantime, we have reached out to um get some sponsorship. And so that is what we are hoping, we are hoping to get some sponsorship and be able to approach it that way.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that that's okay with you guys. I don't know that we need to vote on that if we were able to get the sponsor.
I think that's brilliant.
Portal.
Yeah.
Of course, be sponsored by them, us on the portal. Um, I just, I really feel strongly, I absolutely understand that taking on the investment of what we're originally pushing. I absolutely feel strongly that this is the way um to decrease the barriers to participation in the program, to get the most participation in the program, to get the best kickoff, to look our best, you know, on that first day. We will kick off regardless if we have to collect papers and, you know, hand enter. But this really helps us to do everything we want to do, um because we were really limited without, we lose them. And we have um confidentiality coverage for people to be able to submit the information that they can submit for the doctor through the portal, because it's heavily protected.
Oh, good.
Versus otherwise. And so if we have to do it ourselves, there are certain things we can't, we can't collect, right? So um it will really help. But um big shout out to Demetrius and Allison, and Allison's here, she's one of our um public health interns. Madeline, who have been working on contacting people for those sponsorships.
Very good.
Thank you. And then the other big update is um Project Adam. And I'm forgetting if we talked about this last month at all, but I don't, I'm seeing that a lot of our schools have been achieving Project Adam, Heart Safe School status. I don't know if you've seen.
Chester Schools.
Was the most recent, I believe, right?
Did the Portage Schools too? Portage, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Um, and I, so Crystal was looking into becoming a heart safe health department because she found that that was a possibility and we would be the first health department in the state. But when she started looking into it, she was like, we can be the first heart safe community site outside of a heart safe county. And so we contacted the commissioners and said, hey, what do you guys think of this? Whole administration building would be a heart safe community site, receive that designation, and they were absolutely on board. So what's happened since then is that Tara, um, our American Heart Association, American Heart Forum, um individual who's stationed at the health department has gone around, she has trained two hundred.
Wow.
Two hundred Porter County employees and hands only CPR. We always say hands-free CPR on accident.
Yeah.
Um, and then we're putting together um a response team. And they will be trained in um B L S, CPR, both CPR and B L S. And then we are getting our A T's moved to public patients, our additional A T installed. And on Wednesday, June the fourth, Project Adam will be here and we will have our exercise at ten o'clock. So we're going to have a meeting, a meeting that's going on, a public meeting in this room. And then we will have our exercise with our event, and our team will respond. Um, and Project Adam will have to observe that, and um at that time, it is hoped to grant the status. Um, so that's Wednesday, June the fourth, and of course we'll put out official invitations, but we wanted everybody to mark their calendar. And the plan is to walk downstairs and have a reception for our um health department. So.
Wish. Awesome.
Be all done, and you did, and all of that, so um yeah, if anybody has anything to add to that.
I can't believe we would be the first county that would do something like this.
So LaPorte County is an actual heart safe county.
Okay.
So they're the first county to have heart safe status.
Okay.
Um, and that is the goal.
Yeah.
Tim Stites from Valpo Fire is also working toward the goal. And so he has this great model where we all start in different areas and work out. So in Valpo, he has the Valpo, Valpo Community Schools, Valpo is a university community um model. And so, you know, knowing that is great. It's all about these partnerships and knowing that we can move to other areas of the county and do the same thing. And so, you know, we can go into the schools, and I believe he does sixth grade in Valpo. And so maybe we adopt that same model, and we go into Portage and Duell and all the other schools. Hands-free C P R and sixth grade, we move out from there, so.
Very good.
Okay, I talked a lot of very.
Oh, you had good stuff, really good stuff. All right, any miscellaneous additions? Okay, if there's any public comment. I can have an, a motion to adjourn.
Amen.
Stick around here, I have.
Also know.
I have no electricity. I'm going to sleep here.